I'm ready if everyone's ready. Go ahead and start recording. Are we on?
Brett, are you ready to go?
All right, welcome everybody to our Provo Municipal Council meeting. We're also convening this evening as the Redevelopment Agency and Stormwater Service District. We, today is Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, and the time is 5:32. This meeting will be conducted entirely via electronic means due to the risk of public gatherings associated with the spread of COVID-19. Governor Gary Herbert has waived the anchor location and other certain requirements for public meetings noticing. As outlined in the Executive Order 2020-05, the meeting will be available to the public for live broadcast and on-demand viewing at youtube.com/provo-citycouncil. And I would request the council, on behalf of the council, we request that attendees help maintain the decorum of the meeting by silencing electronic devices, being respectful to others, and please wait to speak until called upon by the council chair, myself. In the current situation, because the meeting is being held via Zoom webinar service and broadcast over YouTube, I remind you to turn off your mics when not speaking so as to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations, feedback, and for things to be recorded and broadcast for all to hear. So I will state those who are present for this meeting as official participants. We have a number of guests here as well who will be speaking as part of presentations, but I am joined by my fellow counselors. I'm George Handley, joined by David Harding, Dave Sewell, Bill Fillmore, Dave Shipley, Travis Hoban, and Shannon Ellsworth. We're also joined by Cliff Stracken, our Executive Director, Brian Jones, our Council Attorney, Wayne Parker, Chief Administrative Officer. And I don't know if the mayor will be joining us later, but we have a variety of other staff who are here in support of this meeting and some who will be speaking. We will begin with an opening prayer given by Dave Sewell, after which we will hear the pledge of allegiance provided by Travis Hoban.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be able to be gathered together virtually for this Provo City Council meeting. We appreciate the opportunity to serve the public and pray for thy inspiration that will use our best judgment to deliberate and make decisions for the benefit of the residents of our city, weighing carefully the various trade-offs involved. We appreciate our citizens and value their input and look forward to hearing from them tonight on these various issues. And pray for thy protection and guidance with, to be with all of us during this difficult time. We offer this prayer in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Sewell and Mr. Hoban for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hoban. We have, before we go into our explanation about public comment, we have a video we'd like to share that was made recently by the city council. And I just want to explain that we've been concerned as a council for some time about the need for greater civility and inclusion and appreciation for the diverse and wonderful qualities of our community. Recent events have made such an expression of appreciation perhaps even more urgent, but this video is not meant as a political statement, but as a statement of principle that we stand by and strive to work toward in all that we do as a council. So without further ado, I'll just let our staff present that video to you.
Welcome home. Provo is our home, whether just for a few years, a few decades, or a lifetime.
Whether we agree or disagree on an issue.
No importa idioma que hagamos.
Or church, or faith.
We come from a long tradition of self-sufficiencies.
And loving and serving our neighbors.
Let us commit to always be warm and welcoming.
To be kind and caring in our interactions.
To listen and understand each other and honor our differences.
To be civil in public discourse.
To communicate in a manner that is mutually respectful.
And to protect against the persecution or alienation of people because of differences.
Provo is our home.
Let's work together to make it what we want.
And need it to be.
Welcome home.
Has anyone seen it before?
Yes.
Welcome.
Who said yes?
I did.
Okay. Thank you Brett for sharing that video and we'll move on. I'll ask Mr. Stracken to do our explanation about calling in and participating in this meeting.
Great, and council, we'll get that video sent out to you. We didn't realize you weren't going to be able to see it when it was shown. Because the city council's meeting virtually by Zoom webinar and it's being broadcast via YouTube, there are neither council members nor members of the public present at Provo City Hall. This necessitates certain changes in procedure for those members of the community who wish to make public comment during the public comment period, or who wish to be heard during public hearings for those items requiring public hearings. To facilitate public comments where designated, we have telephone numbers which will be shown on screen during the public comment or public hearing portions of the meeting. These can be found on the YouTube page where the meeting is being broadcast and at provocitycouncil.com. Callers may have to try multiple numbers to get connected. When a caller is connected, they will be required to enter the meeting ID, which is the listed webinar ID, and enter the pound symbol. The phone system will then ask for a personal ID number, simply enter pound at this point. The caller will now enter the meeting as an attendee and will be able to hear the meeting and will be muted. If a caller wishes to speak on the item being discussed, they can press star nine to indicate their desire to comment and then wait to be called upon. Callers will be called upon by the last four digits of the listed phone number. Each should provide their name and city residence before making their comments. Each will be given up to two minutes to speak. A timer will be posted on screen and a beep should be audible to the caller when the time is up. A required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but it will be limited to 15 minutes total. As is the council's tradition, 15 minutes have also been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. The open public comment period starts now. A reminder that there's approximately a lag, or lag of approximately 30 seconds between the meeting and the broadcast, depending on your speed. Callers should mute the YouTube and Facebook broadcasts once they connect to hear the discussion in real time over the phone.
Hey, we will. I'm a little confused. I don't have, now is the time to ask for public comment that is on anything that is not on our agenda.
That is correct.
Okay, my minutes seem a little vague on that. Okay, so any comments from the public? We're looking at.
Just a reminder to press star nine if you dialed in and want to talk to items that aren't on the agenda right now.
And we're going to wait just a few minutes, or one minute, right, to allow for the delay.
Yep. That's about a minute now.
All right. Okay, seeing no public comment at this time, we'll move on to our approval of minutes. It is proposed we approve the following minutes, February 4th, 2020 council meeting, February 18th, 2020 council meeting, and May 19th, 2020 council meeting. Are there any objections or requested changes to these minutes? All right, seeing none, we will, I declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. We'll begin with a presentation regarding the 2020 census update and Mayor Cafusi's census challenge video. This will be presented by Dixon Holmes, Assistant CAO, and Javin Weaver, City Planner.
Thank you, council chair, vice chair, Mayor Cafusi.
Hold on, hold on one second, Dixon, I apologize, but because of the delay, there's, there is one person who's got their hand up for the public comment.
Sure, no problem.
Let me, let me go to caller whose number ends with 4461. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Carl Youngblood. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, yeah, I apologize. I didn't know that this was the only period for public comment, so I thought that there was going to be a longer section or I would have spoken up sooner. So I just became aware recently that a budget was proposed and I guess is going to be voted on tomorrow. So, you know, it's very possible that I'm not as informed about this situation as I would like to be, but I wanted to, an acquaintance of mine called to my attention that the budget for the Provo City Police Department has been increased from last year, and I'm sure there are very many good reasons for that, but I wanted to, in light of the recent events in our country around concern about how police departments are structured and how law enforcement is structured in our country and how that may be contributing to unnecessary violence and brutality, especially against minorities. I, I've, you know, all of us have started to discuss, I think more openly, how, how it might be possible to structure law enforcement and public services in a way that more reasonably or more ideally like avoids violence and doesn't burden police departments with taking care of many other issues that may be more ideally taken care of by other, other areas like social workers, mental health professionals, better funding for education, things like that. And even though here in Utah, we don't necessarily, we experience, you know, relatively low crime rates, and I think we have a good functioning, you know, system of governance compared to some other urban areas. I think that we still have problems where we've seen issues with the police in the state of Utah, especially in regards to minorities where, you know, certain nonviolent offenders who are just running away from police, even in some cases have been, been fatally shot. And I just, I think that this is a moment where we could talk and discuss that, and I, I just wanted to ask you all to, if you could say anything about this budget, and I, you know, I recognize that there's not a lot of, been a lot of time maybe to go over this, and maybe this needs to come later, but has there been any discussion about any reforms or changes that might be made in the police, the way the budgeting of police and law enforcement occurs in Provo City? And what, what do you have plans for the future?
Yeah, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I forgot to let you know that we had a two-minute timer on your comment. I apologize for that.
Right, right, right.
My fault. I should clarify that that item actually is going to be discussed. That's item number three on our agenda is the budget. It will be discussed and voted on this evening. So your comment is appropriate to that item, and there may be others who want to speak to that. I would, if there are others who want to speak to that, I would ask that they wait until we get to that item and we'll allow some more public comment, and we will be addressing the very questions that you're, important questions that you're posing. So I appreciate it. And since I know you, I'm also more than happy, Carl, to talk to you one-on-one at a time that's convenient for both of us. I have another caller who, again, this is for any item that's not on our agenda this evening, so caller whose number ends in 3600, you are, you're allowed to speak. Go ahead, and please keep it to two minutes. Thank you.
Of course. Hello, my name is Kaitlyn Cooper. I'm a resident of Provo. As you just mentioned, I'm calling in on the same topic, and you just mentioned that it will be covered in topic number three, so.
Yeah, if you would wait until then, that would be ideal.
Of course. I just didn't know how to cancel my phone. Sorry, technology incompetence.
That's okay. That's all right. Can she just stay on staff? I mean, how, does she need to do anything?
Mr. Handley, I think, when I was trying to mute her at the end, I think she dropped off, so she'll probably need to call back in.
I still see the phone number listening in, so.
Yeah, she'll be, she'll be fine. She'll be able to hit star nine when we get to the budget item and raise her hand again, so she'll be just fine.
I'm very sorry. I hope it didn't seem like we were trying to cut off comments, but we have a lot on our agenda tonight, so we are trying to manage things efficiently. All right, so we, we will go back then to item number one with Dixon Holmes. Go ahead.
Thank you, council chair, vice chair, and mayor. Again, tonight, we just wanted to give the council and also the public that are participating an update on the census, the 2020 census, and what we have been doing, the importance of it. And so Mayor Cafusi would like to say a few things about what we're doing. We have a couple of videos and a quick PowerPoint, so we'll go from there. Mayor Cafusi.
Hi, thanks, everybody, and thanks for giving us a few minutes tonight. It's just been interesting because this is such a huge piece of the next 10 years and what it brings to the city, but it's been a little bit overlooked because of all the issues that are going on right now. And so we thought we'd just take a minute and bring a little attention to it. It's critical, I don't need to tell you all, but it decides our funding, it decides the boundaries for different council members and school board members. It will decide our count for our city. It's so significant that we thought, let's be a little creative, and even though it's a chaotic time, let's try and do something fun with maybe some other mayors and just see what we can come up with. So Dixon and Nicole, they've all been great, and we've tried to draw a little attention to it. I don't know how much movement we're going to get on it because of other things that have popped up, but at least we're going to try hard to get some, some more movement on the census and get more people to take the time to, well, it doesn't even take time, it's just a few minutes to take the census. So go ahead, Dixon, and let's show them a couple of the things we've been working on.
Hey Hannah, if you could roll the final countdown, please.
The final countdown census challenge is about getting as many people as possible to respond to the census as soon as possible. Can we count on you? To increase the fun, we're adding some competition. It's the North Cities versus the South Cities. Salt Lake County versus Utah County, with a goal for each city to increase their current participation rate by 5% by June 30th. Provo self-response rate is 63.7, putting us neck and neck with Salt Lake City. We're coming for you. I love a good competition, and it's on. The competition runs from June 1st through the 30th. You can respond online, by mail, or by phone. Community members can track the response rates by visiting 2020census.gov. Don't forget, students count too. If you are attending school in Provo during spring, then you count here. And did I mention, I don't like to lose.
Thank you. We also have another video that we'd like to show really quickly. If you could then run the, the one that was just released yesterday. Thank you, Hannah.
There are a lot of crazy things going on right now, but there is something very important that needs your help. And don't worry, you don't have to leave the comfort of your fort. The United States 2020 Census is going on now. There you go. Oh, before I forget. That's all right. Thanks. So, you might be asking yourself, was the census, why is it important? Let's start off with a history lesson. Here is your time machine. Thank you, Cyberpunk McHacker.
What will we ever do with all this money?
We're in the year 1790, when the first census was conducted and made a law. The census records the population in the United States and happens once every 10 years. It helps determine many important things for your community, things such as how many representatives each state gets in Congress, but even more importantly, how $675 billion federal dollars gets distributed into your communities for the next decade. This community gets money, and this community gets money, and this community, and that community, and this program gets money. You all get money, money, money. You see, this money is what helps schools, hospitals, and those darn roads you find yourself complaining about, fire departments, and so many other services. I know you might be saying to yourself, the census doesn't affect me because I'm on the road all the time, or I'm a renter, I don't know where I'll be in the next few months, or I'm a college student, so I don't need to take the census, my parents will do it for me. Here's the truth, the census is for everyone. Many people don't get counted each census, which means communities miss out on funding they deserve. That's why it's important for you to take the census. The best part is, it only takes a few minutes to take. All you need is a computer and a letter that you should have received in the mail containing your 12-digit census ID number. Don't worry, you can respond by phone, or mail. The data collected by the census is confidential. Don't worry, there is federal law that protects your responses, and none of your information will be shared with law enforcement, immigration agencies, or housing authorities. In fact, the law states census records can only be released after 72 years, so there's a good chance you would have moved by then. So take a few minutes and complete the census today. Be sure to include everyone living in your household, including the little ones. No pun intended.
Thank you. Now we'll have Javin Weaver give a kind of a real quick, brief overview of some of the particulars on the census. Thanks, Javin.
Yep. Hannah, if you can pull up the presentation, please.
Hannah, if you can pull up the presentation, please. All right, the next slide, next slide. All right, so a couple of things. How can I take the census? You can go online to www.2020census.gov, or you can respond by phone, or you can respond by mail. To call by phone, there's a couple of different phone numbers. There are additional phone numbers available online that you can utilize if you have another language that you need. Next question, or slide. So each home should receive a invitation, invitation to take the census. It's going to look like this on the right. Um, that's the first thing that you should receive. After that, well, on that, it will include a census ID, a 12-digit code that you'll need to take the census. However, you don't exactly need to use that if you, when you are taking the census online. Now, I will explain upon that later. Additionally, you may receive a couple of postcards between men who take census. If the Census Bureau has not heard back from you after a certain time, then they will mail you a hard copy, um, paper form for you to send in. But the primary option that they are looking for is to have you fill it out online. And if you fill it, if you receive additional, uh, postcards about the census after you've submitted it, you can just disregard those. So next slide, please. So you're going to go to this website, 2020census.gov. You're going to click start here, or I'm sorry, you can click respond now at the big green, um, area, area. Next slide. And after that, it's going to take you to this, um, page here. If English is not your first language, you can go up to the top right and select that, uh, down arrow next to English. There are 59 languages that the census is available for anyone to take. So for, so anyone can be able to utilize this. Next slide. So again, this is where you're going to put in your 12-digit code. If you don't have that code, or what that code does is it ties your address point to a specific location with the census. But you don't necessarily need it. And for purposes of this presentation, I chose that I did not need it. So you can click on the area that says, if you don't have a census ID, click here. So that's what I did. Next slide. And if you don't have your census ID, it's just going to ask you a couple more questions to verify your location. So for this, I put a US state, except for Utah. Next slide. And then I input the address point. If for some reason you don't have an home, or if you are not living in a traditional living setting, um, you could put, I don't have a street address. You can check that box at the bottom left. And then it'll ask you a couple of other questions such as, where do you think you will be on April 1st? Um, and if you happen to be at 200 West, 500 North, that's where you would put, and that's okay. Next slide. Then it's going to have, confirm the address point. You're going to make sure that's accurate, then you're going to click next. Next slide, please. And then this is where you start putting in, uh, your information. You'll see at the top, there is a kind of a status bar. You're going to have your address, household questions, uh, people questions, and final question. So this is where you put your name. If you're just a single person living in a home, you just put yourself. If you have additional people, that's, this is where you'd, after this, you'd add other people to it. Uh, the telephone number is utilized in case there's a question on the census and they, they don't, they want to confirm something with you. So let's just say you had, um, you're renting out your basement to someone else as well, and they both fill out the census. But there's only one address point. They could call you and just verify, um, the current living conditions of that property. After you, um, input your name, it may have you list how many people are living at that residence. If you have four people, or three, or however many, that's great. Then it's going to have you list their names, um, birth date, whether you own or rent the, rent the residence. And then additional information such as sex, age, race for each member. Uh, next slide. If you are taking the census online and you get distracted, um, the census will timeout after 15 minutes. Um, however, if you haven't submitted anything, nothing's, um, saved on here until it's submitted. So you can't go back. You'd have to go back and start at the beginning of the census. Next slide. If you have any questions about COVID-19, or, um, kind of college students, or who you should count. If you do, just go to 2020census.gov and scroll down. There are some additional information right there. Next slide. Just a reminder, uh, if you did live in Provo, if you should have been living in Provo, um, on April 20th, April 1st, 2020, then you should count that you were living here. With this year, with the COVID-19, it has created some, um, normal circumstances. But if you should have been here for school, and we want you to put that you lived here, lived here for that time period. Next slide. Uh, you are able to take this census at Provo City. You can take the census either at customer service, the recreation center, or the library. The hours are posted on here. There are computers available for you to take the census at those locations. Next slide. Uh, so the last day that you can self-respond to the census is Halloween. The date has been extended from July to Halloween because of COVID-19. So you have ample time to complete the census, complete the census. Next slide. And if anyone has, and if anyone in the public or city staff has any questions about the census, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate us letting us give a presentation and an update. That's it.
Oh, okay. I, I'm sorry. I misheard you. All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Holmes and, uh, Mr. Weaver. Appreciate your, uh, presentations. We're, uh, we're quite the multimedia production company here, uh, tonight's city council meeting. We'll go to, uh, item number two, which is an implied motion on, uh, public hearing on transferring utility revenues to the general fund and other funds. This will be presented by David Mortensen. And I should clarify for those who, uh, were calling in earlier about comments. This is not the item about the budget as a whole. That would be the next item.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Hanley. Um, I think the best way to introduce this item, um, before the public hearing would be to read the notice that went out to utility customers, um, quite a while ago. Um, this is something that's required by state code that we send out. Um, it gives great information about the transfers from the utility funds. Um, so bear with me for a minute while I read that. Um, so state law requires that Provo City provide an annual disclosure of funds transferred from the utility enterprise funds to the general fund. Historically, Provo has budgeted for the transfer of 10% of utility fund revenues to the general fund as a dividend to Provo taxpayers as the result of the taxpayers' investment in the city's utility infrastructure. These funds are used each year to help cover the costs of important city services like police, fire, parks, and recreation, and other city functions. The utility transfer, together with franchise fees, helps keep property taxes in Provo low. If city utility services were provided by private utility owners, these dividends would instead be paid to investor owners. Because Provo taxpayers are the investor owners, these dividends are used to offset what otherwise would be a significant increase in property tax rates. The 10% transfer totals $11,490,397 in the proposed 2021 budget. Since 2013, a 1% transfer from utility fund revenues has been transferred to the general fund to be used to enhance available funding for road maintenance. The 2021 budget proposes that $1,149,041 be transferred to the general fund. It is more cost-effective and operationally efficient for certain administrative functions such as legal, human resources, information technology, and finance to be administered on a citywide basis. Transfers from the funds receiving the benefit of these administrative services to the general fund totaling $1,258,879 have been included in the proposed 2021 budget. A resolution was passed on November 15th, 2011, allowing for an energy rate increase for telecom debt service fee. These fees provide funding for telecom debt service payments. The transfer to the telecom debt service fund totals $3250,000 in the proposed 2021 budget. Provo City is in the process of implementing a citywide system known as Provo 360. The system will benefit residents, customers, and all departments of the city. The proposed 2021 budget includes transfers of $894,190 to the Provo 360 Fund. A transfer of $583,820 from the wastewater fund to the water fund has been included in the 2021 proposed budget. The transfer is a reimbursement for management services provided to the wastewater fund by the water fund. Um, so shown on your screen also is the table that outlines all of the transfers that I just talked about, um, that were in this notice. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to the council for discussion or the public for comment.
All right. Any, uh, any quick follow-up, uh, questions for Mr. Mortensen? Um, for the public, uh, now would be the time to call in or signal that you want to make a comment on this item. If there's any comment from the public, I'll wait, uh, a little bit because of the delay in the broadcast to see if anybody would like to make a comment. Okay, we'll bring it back, uh, to the council for any discussion. Any comments, questions for Mr. Mortensen or discussion among the council? All right, seeing none, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with you, Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And I, George Hanley, will vote yes. So the voting is unanimous. All right, we'll move on to item number three, which is an ordinance adopting a budget for Provo City Corporation for the fiscal year, beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $292,355,876, and amending the consolidated fee schedule. This is the second of two required public hearings on this item. Uh, we'll have a presentation again by Mr. David Mortensen, our budget officer, after which, uh, the public will be welcome to make comments. So, uh, just, uh, as an advance warning to the public about that. Uh, the timing of that, when Mr. Mortensen is done, I might ask the council for any comments. And then I'll turn it over to a public comment, and you will be given, uh, two minutes, uh, each to, to make any comments. So, Mr. Mortensen.
Thank you. So first, I'll mention that, um, an updated version of the budget document is on the website currently. Um, so anyone that's interested to look at that document at this point, um, can go to provo.org, navigate to Departments, Finance, um, Financial Reports, and then, um, look at Budget Reports. Um, and the very top one should be the 2021 budget. Um, with that, there have been some changes, um, to the budget, um, related to, uh, Provo City since our last meeting on June 2nd. Um, the council's received in their packet, um, the detail of what those changes are. Um, but I wanted to highlight at least, um, some of the, the bigger changes, um, and why they occurred. One of the main ones has to do with revenues. Um, as many of you know, we, we rely on, um, the county to calculate our certified tax rates each year. Um, that rate fluctuates year to year based on property values, um, to keep our, uh, revenues somewhat flat, um, other than any growth that we see. So when, when our property tax revenues increase, it usually means that we're seeing some growth in the city. Um, we don't receive that certified tax rate typically until the first or second week in June. Um, so it was just last week that we received our certified tax rates, um, and estimated property tax revenues. Um, and so with that information, we updated the revenues in the budget. And it increased, I can give some detail here, increased our general fund revenues by just over $66,000. And increased our library fund revenues by just over $51,000. Um, one place where we did see a reduction in what we had estimated was property tax revenues related to our debt service fund. Um, we had estimated a little bit higher than what the actual revenue would, will come in at. Um, $169,000 lower than what we had on the previous budget. And so that's the, the biggest change in revenues. We did have some, um, changes in expenditures. One of the major ones is in the water fund. Um, through, uh, discussions with the Public Works Department, um, it was determined that, um, a project, specifically the ASR capital project that we've discussed in the past, um, that we needed to pull some of that funding in this budget year. Um, and hold on to that for, for other needs or for use in the future. So, um, that was, uh, about a million dollars, um, in expenditure reduction in the water fund. Um, we also made some changes to the Utility Transportation Fund, um, based on Public Works, um, recommendations. Um, just updating those numbers to, to better reflect where they think things will be for the upcoming year. There are things, uh, vehicle replacement, um, that, uh, revenue amount, um, was adjusted a little bit. Um, just updating numbers and formulas, um, ended up being a little bit higher than we, than we originally anticipated. Um, all the other changes from the tentative version that was adopted on May 19th, and then discussed again two weeks ago. Um, all these other changes, um, that were in your packet are, are pretty minor. Um, some of them were formula errors or, um, you know, totals that weren't, uh, capturing all of the, the cells. Um, so we made all of those corrections, went through it multiple times with a fine-tooth comb to find all of these. Um, and that's, uh, where we sit now. Um, so as you mentioned, the total for all funds in Provo City is $292,355,876 in expenditures.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mortensen. Any, uh, questions, uh, from Mr. Mortensen from the council before I open it up for public comment? All right, uh, we will now open it up for public comment. If, uh, you'd like to make a comment, uh, you'll want to press star nine. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, caller, uh, whose number ends in three, six, zero, zero. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kaitlyn Cooper and I am a resident of Provo. Um, I did want to call in to, um, first acknowledge the relationship that our city has with its police officers and progressive training that has been adopted by Provo City. Um, however, as Minneapolis has shown us, um, progressive training isn't the be-all, end-all of how we can reevaluate our city's relationship with police officers. And that the defund the police movement has given us the opportunity to talk about diversifying and specializing the duties that we have to conduct. Has increased in the last few decades, um, perhaps by reevaluating the budget. And as a previous caller mentioned, either moving some of the responsibilities such as traffic control onto other civil servants, or perhaps even into specialized departments within the police department that have different mandates or response levels that they can respond to situations with. Um, with that in mind, as a member of this community, I would like to encourage the council to, um, consider, uh, creating an exploratory committee for the upcoming years of it to see what possibilities might lie ahead so that our city, which already has this really good relationship, um, can be an example to other communities that have more difficulties of how we can create more safeguards for the people and the police to, um, have that trust with each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, caller whose number ends in zero, five, zero, seven. Go ahead.
Hi, this is 053600. I think I got unmuted again.
Oh, okay. I think I just muted you back. Sorry. Um, so again, this, sorry. Keeps jumping around on me. Is it, yeah, 050?
Yes. Uh, I'm Abby Price and I'm a resident of Provo. Um, I'm calling about the allocations for policing compared to the other, uh, departments for Provo. Um, as I've been examining, examining the budget, um, the majority of the funding for the police department is going to patrolling. Um, there is some to community policing. Um, however, the information about what this is, is, uh, not very accessible or available as I've tried to figure that out. And the website, um, that's supposed to give some more information about that, also has no information about that. Um, and as far as I know, community policing, uh, is not necessarily clearly effective. Um, and so what we are funding even within the police department, uh, that could be seen as beneficial to helping community relations with. that could be seen as beneficial to helping community relations with law and order in our community, does not seem very effective, as well as the goals listed in the budget focus on mental health or on the suppression of gangs as well. But there is no discussion about how there might be racial inequalities in policing, and that should definitely be a goal, especially in how we're funding policing. I find this a bigger problem, that policing takes the majority of the general funding as well, because there are definitely other areas and departments that should be funded, like the Community and Neighborhood Services Department, as well as Development Services, which can help with housing and developing our communities and neighborhoods in which we can create an environment in which crime will be reduced because people are not in circumstances in which they feel compelled to do so. And I think that there should definitely be more discussion about this before we approve the budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Price, much appreciated. Any other comments from the public? I don't see any other hands up. I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion, and I wanted to say a couple of things to the public about this, just on my own. I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire council, I'm just making my own comment. But I would like to, after I make a few remarks, invite either the mayor or Wayne Parker, if you'd like to add any thoughts. But we received over 14 pages of public comment on Open City Hall about this question of funding for the police with a variety of different perspectives and concerns, but more or less all responding understandably to the current situation that has become very apparent to the entire nation about whether or not we're over, we have an overreliance on police for public safety and what we can do to prevent the possibility of police brutality and discriminatory behavior or practices. I just want to say a few words about the budget process for clarification. We have been in deliberation about the budget for several months. Mr. Youngblood alluded to this in his comment, and this recent concern is, the timing is unfortunately a little bit, quite a bit late in the process for us. It's not to say that it's not important for us to be thinking about, but I quite like the suggestion that was just made about making sure that as we move forward, we formulate some committee or formal effort and ongoing conversation with the public and between the administration and the city council to investigate what we can do to be better. I don't think any of us wants to, or should want to, assume that we can't improve, that we don't have areas of concern. I know that we do a lot of things really well in Provo with our police force, but I'm sure that there are things that we can do to improve. The conversation that is happening nationally and here in Provo is really a conversation about a pretty significant cultural change, as well as a political change. It's, I guess, I guess all I'm saying is that it's the kind of conversation that to do it right really needs to take some time. And for us to make any last-minute decisions about our budget at this point, I think would be, would risk not resulting in the kinds of results that we would like to see. The process is, however, underway, and I can let the administration speak to that. We know our police chief is actually meeting him today. I think he's meeting tomorrow and on Thursday with people in the public to provide an opportunity for him to hear the concerns of the public and for him to provide information to the public. I think it's fabulous that this is now a moment where there's greater and greater transparency. There's more interest in the public than ever before in the budget, which I think is wonderful. And so I think we would, we would like to, as a council, again, I'm speaking for myself, I would like our council to host discussions about this. I spoke earlier today with the mayor, and she indicated a willingness to do that and see what we can do to continue to gather information, gather feedback, investigate what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, and what we need to do to change, whether it's a change in policy or in funding. I will say, just again, speaking personally about the increase in the budget, this is a very modest increase. It is an increase that was based on an earlier request from the school district for one more police officer to serve in the schools, which was already granted. But the funding for it was provided, half of it was provided by the school district. So this is an adjustment that was made in the budget that would then allow our police department to use an extra officer in the city. I will just say that for historically, and my, our police department has actually been understaffed for many, many years, and our police officers are putting in enormous amounts of overtime hours. And I think, I would hope that anyone would agree that that's not the ideal circumstance under which to work as a police officer. So I do think it's in our interest to go ahead with this approval. But that said, I do think we need to investigate and think carefully about whether or not, what we can do to improve and maybe relieve further the pressures that are on our good police officers in this town. So I guess all I'm saying is that I certainly don't assume that we don't need to change, that we don't need to improve, that we don't have any problems. But I just would say that I think it's a process that is beginning and will continue. And I am confident that as a council and with the administration's help, that we can get to some real answers soon as we're doing this in this stage of listening and learning and investigating and studying this out so that we do it right. Is there anything you'd like to add, Mayor Kafusi or Wayne, Mr. Parker?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. That's a really good summary. I think we share your concerns and we're anxious to get through this information gathering process we're in right now and start reaching for appropriate action steps. We concur with your view that it has, you know, I think if you were to ask our average Provo resident how many police department interactions we have with the public every year, they might be surprised to learn that it's well over 80,000 every year. And we do that with 117 police officers. And so it is, it is a big job, and there is, there's certainly a lot to do. You know, we'd be happy at some point soon to talk to you about how we engage with mental health professionals and the Wasech Mental Health Strike Force team that's available to us 24/7 when we run into a circumstance with a mental health issue that's called into our 911 center. But again, we're anxious to be engaged. We agree with you, that we appreciate the engagement of our residents on the budget. That's encouraging to us. So we look forward to the continuing dialogue, and we'll keep marching down that path.
All right, any comments from the council on this issue or any issue related to the budget? Okay, yes, sorry, I have another caller. I wasn't paying attention. I thought maybe we had taken care of that. So I'll go back to, this is caller-
Any comments from the council on this issue or any issue related to the budget?
Sorry, I can't, this is caller whose number ends, now that the talking is permitted, 2350, go ahead.
Hi, so my name is Madison Fisher. I am a resident in Provo. And I appreciate this discussion about the budget, especially about allocation of funds to the police department. I still, though, would like to just voice some concerns that I have. I looked over the previous budget that was shared on the website, and I also looked at the revised budget that was just mentioned a few minutes ago. I just looked over that. And I understand that it was the school's request to place officer, another, additional officers in schools, but I still have to voice my concern if the city's support of that, especially right now, as school districts all over the country are severing ties with police departments. Police officers were initially placed in schools to prevent school shootings, but data has continually shown that to be ineffective and that police officers in schools actually harms our most vulnerable students. For example, federal data shows that in the 2015 to 2016 school year, black students totaled about 15% of the school population nationally, but they made up 31% of arrests in schools. And the statistics are similar for students with disabilities as well. So I'm just calling to ask that, I understand that we're already really late in this process, and so it's hard to make changes to the budget at this time. But I'm calling to ask to really consider the relationship that the police department has with the school districts and to eliminate such expenditures from the budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, any further comment from the council on this, on this issue? Maybe I'll just reiterate that I think that is precisely the conversation I welcome among the other issues that I think are being circulated and people are debating and talking about. I think it's worthy of our attention. Like I say, this was actually, as I understand it, this was actually approved sort of in midstream in January. And so we're sort of tying up the loose ends on the budgetary aspects of the position. But it may be a longer conversation we need to have with the school district and as a city about the usefulness and effectiveness of those officers. I do know that they do teach classes in the high school. I know that there's some question as to whether or not they're always necessary, but that's, that's a good conversation to have. All right.
Chair Handley, can I take just one more second?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just, I failed to mention in my opening presentation that this updated budget does include the funding that was discussed by Dan Gonzalez earlier today related to CDBG funding for COVID-19. So we're anticipating receiving that revenue in the fiscal year 2021 of $745,997. And so we added into this budget that revenue, as well as the corresponding expenditures that were mentioned in that earlier presentation today, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll start with Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I, George Handley, will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Okay, I think that was everybody, right? So that voting was unanimous. Thank you for all the hard work everybody's done on the budget process for the past many months. It's been a pleasure to work with the administration. Very grateful for their transparency and good communication and our mutual trust. Okay, we will convene as, we'll turn to our action agenda, and we'll convene as the Stormwater Service District, as the governing board of the Stormwater Service District, and recess as the municipal council. So, sorry, let me rephrase that. If there is no objection, we will now recess as the municipal council and reconvene as governing board of the Stormwater Service District of Provo by unanimous consent. And we will turn to an implied motion on item number four, which is a public hearing on transferring stormwater fund revenues to the general fund and other funds. This is also presented by David Mortensen, our budget officer.
Thank you. Yeah, give me one second to pull that up. I apologize, I had this open and then closed it by accident, so. Okay, so the storm drain, Stormwater District is transferring a total of $756,631 to the general fund. As noted in the earlier presentation, this is partially a 10% transfer, considered a dividend to Provo City, and then a 1% transfer to help pay for roads. And then also includes an administrative overhead charge of $81,908 and a charge for Provo 360, our citywide software, of $56,963. So again, that total transfer from the Stormwater Service District to Provo City is $756,631.
All right, thank you. Is there any, any comment or question for Mr. Mortensen from the council before I turn it over to the public? Any members of the public who wish to comment on this item, please indicate. Give me a minute. I'll bring it back to the council for any discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, seeing no discussion, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. We'll begin with Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I, George Handley, will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you. We will continue as a Stormwater Service District with an implied motion on item number five, a resolution adopting a budget for the Provo City Stormwater Service District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, in the amount of $6,704,839. And again, it's back to you, Mr. Mortensen, who's got a busy evening tonight.
Thank you. So I don't have anything new to add tonight that we haven't already discussed in previous meetings. This number is the same as what was adopted tentatively on May 19th, and the same as what was part of a public hearing two weeks ago, and in front of the council two weeks ago. So that total for the Stormwater Service District, including the transfer that was just discussed and approved, is $6,704,839.
Okay, and this is the second of two required public hearings on this item. Any comment from the public on this item? Give it just a minute. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council, and I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. We'll begin with Mr. Hoben.
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Shipley?
Yes.
I, George Handley, will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
All right, the voting is unanimous. We will now have one more item. Sorry, we will call, excuse me. If there is no objection, we will now adjourn as the governing board of the Stormwater Service District of Provo and reconvene as the governing board of the Redevelopment Agency of Provo by unanimous consent. We will now- now uh, convene as the Redevelopment Agency and we have an employee, oh, sorry, and I will turn this over to our Redevelopment Agency Chair, Mr. David Sewell. Go ahead, Mr. Sewell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just having a momentary technical difficulty here. Okay, I've got my, got my chair notes in front of me now. So uh, we have uh, item number seven for the Redevelopment Agency to consider, which is or six, excuse me. Item number six would be next, a resolution adopting a budget for the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City Corporation for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy one thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. And this item will be presented by David Mortensen.
Thank you, Chair Sewell. Um, so similarly with the Stormwater District, there have been no changes or updates to this budget amount for the Redevelopment Agency. It's been consistent uh, throughout the process in the tentative budget in May and the prior public hearing in, on June second. So with that, uh, I will open it up to any questions that people have.
Hey, any comments? Oh, sorry, Mr. Sewell, you can, uh, well, I don't know if you can manage the phone calls, I can do it for you.
Sure. Appreciate that. Uh, so did we have any questions for Mr. Mortensen then, before we go to that? Doesn't look like it. All right, so Mr. Hanley, um, what do you need to do to check to see if there is, is the incoming public comment?
Uh, we can wait uh, just a little bit longer and then I'll turn it back to you.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
Okay, seeing there is no public comment, we will uh, close the public hearing and bring it back to the RDA Board for any discussion. Uh, if there's no comments or questions from the RDA Board, we have a uh, an implied motion and I will call for a vote on that. Uh, Mr. Hanley.
Yes.
Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hoben.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
And I, Dave Sewell will vote yes as well, uh, which makes that a unanimous vote. Uh, the, then we will move on to item number seven, which is a resolution approving and adopting the community reinvestment project area plan and budget for the Riverwoods Community Reinvestment Project Area. And this item is to be presented by David Walter.
Thank you, Chair Sewell and members of the Redevelopment Agency Board. The item before you tonight is a several resol, couple of resolutions and an ordinance that would enact and adopt the community reinvestment area for the Riverwoods area. So we had started this process earlier with a resolution that adopted a survey area that encompassed a significant portion of the Riverwoods Business Park. Tonight's action is adopt, it would adopt the plan. The plan has scaled that back pretty dramatically, so it is the eight parcels that are part of and immediately adjacent to the Qualtrics facilities in the Riverwood Business Park. Uh, by way of background, Qualtrics has approached the city and indicated that they are going to double their size. And they're going to put in a hundred and sixty six thousand square feet of Class A office space immediately adjacent to their present facility, and they will add two structured parking facilities of about five hundred spaces each so that they can accommodate the over a thousand employees that they plan to hire in the next little while. Over the next ten years, rather. Uh, Qualtrics, as uh, as most of you know, Qualtrics started here in Provo. They have grown and have been very successful here in Provo. And this is an opportunity for us to help maintain those businesses here in Provo and help them to expand and continue to achieve their goals. The project area would allow the city and the agency to begin the process of negotiating with the affected taxing entities and to help capture a portion of the tax increment that should, could be generated, or should be generated, rather, after the construction of the facilities. And we're proposing to share that seventy five percent with the city, seventy percent with the, the school district and the water district, and fifty percent with the county. Because this is a new project area, Utah state law now requires the agency to set aside ten percent of the tax increment funds it does receive through this process into a housing fund that would help to provide and maintain the city's stock of low and moderate income housing. Uh, it's important to note, I think, that there is no residential component plan for the, this project area has, it's completely encased within the Riverwoods Business Park, but we would be able to use those funds in other areas in the city and help maintain and preserve that stock. I think Qualtrics currently has uh, co-headquarters here in Provo as also in Seattle, and uh, they have the opportunity to move fairly quickly. I mean, they're but they have chosen to try to stay here in Provo to take advantage of the fact of the the workforce that we have, the opportunities that we have, and to continue on their success. They've worked with the state and have um, received an ed tip from the state. And tonight's action would help us to create a redevelopment project area that would generate some tax increment to help us offset the cost of the structured parking within that proposed development. After the construction, the, there will be an increase not only from parking for Qualtrics, but in parking for the benefit of the Riverwoods project, the Riverwoods Business Park itself. And so all of the other businesses and customers that go to that area will have the benefit of some of the parking that will be there as well. Uh, tonight's actions, there will be two resolutions that will be adopted and proposed ordinance that consider, we will take those acts and um, take those to this, to the county and record those. Tonight's action has been uh, a notice public hearing. We have set aside thirty, we we noticed this thirty days ago so that people would have ample time to know about it. The proposed budget and the redevelopment plan have been available at the city recorder's office for those thirty days. Staff's presentation. I, I believe that uh, some individuals from Qualtrics are available as well, so happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Walter or for the Qualtrics representatives who are joining us tonight? Seeing that, oh, Mr. Hanley?
Sorry, I uh, I just see Mr. Shipley has a hand up.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. Go ahead, Mr. Shipley.
I just wonder how many of the thousand parking spots will be available to the community versus, you know, being private or, or locked?
So as I understand it, and I'll let the Qualtrics answer this a little bit better, but as I understand it, that um, there is a current lot that is undeveloped, and then once that lot has a portion of the, the structured parking on it, the balance of that lot would be available as parking for the remainder of the business park.
Any, any idea or estimate on how many spaces that is?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, but if Mr. Shields has an option or has a number.
I believe that the four acre lot, which is being referred to as uh, just under four hundred spaces, if I recall correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yeah, I was just curious. I can't remember the site plan. Um, will the parking lot be next to the river?
So there are, as currently proposed, and obviously, you know, COVID is um, weighing in on this a little bit, but there would be two parking structures on the seventeen acres where the current facility sits, and then the, the additional lot which we purchased is across the street, and yes, it borders the river.
The parking lot that exists right now is adjacent to the river?
The, the, the parking, uh, the four acres across the street where we would develop as a parking lot is, is on the river. It borders the river. Yes, it's across the street from Qualtrics.
Okay. Yeah, I've had some concerns about that since the beginning. Um, my hope was that we could create the river as, preserve and create spaces around the, the river um, for public use and that we're welcoming and inviting and created a linear park. So my concern is that a parking lot is not conducive to that kind of public access and preservation of a public amenity.
So there is a setback uh, that we would honor, and then there's a currently a path that uh, goes along the river, which we would leave undisturbed.
Do you remember what the, does anyone remember what the setback is?
I believe it's one hundred feet. Could, I could double check on that.
Okay. Yeah, I remember um, last year having a discussion with the planning commission about the river, and my hope was that the setback would be a hundred yards. But um, if that's not in our city ordinances, then maybe that's something that we can reevaluate in the future.
Are there any other questions for uh, Mr. Shields or Mr. Walter? All right, thank you. Let's move on to public comment then. If you could help me again, uh, Mr. Hanley with uh, checking to see if we have any.
Okay, uh, now's the time to press star nine if you want to make a public comment on this item. Just a handful, a couple callers, but I don't know if they're just give it a thirty seconds.
Oh, are those listed over in the attendees?
Yeah, yeah, nobody's raised. Oh, I think you can go ahead.
I see, thank you. Um, okay. So uh, seeing that there's no uh, public comment, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the RDA Board for any discussion. And I just wanted to say, um, this is a really big deal for Provo, I think, to bring a business that is bringing that many jobs and that many high paying jobs, so uh, I'm really uh, excited about that.
Mr. Harding has a comment.
Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I said what I wanted to say in the earlier meeting, but um, since it's a new meeting, just uh, want to register uh, my my discomfort with using tax, tax increment financing i- in this way generally. Um, I think it's kind of a, a game that we have to play because everyone around us plays the game. Um, but I think uh, you know, the, the tax increment that we're um, rebating could go a long ways, you know, six hundred thousand of this will, will be coming from our school district. And I think that money could have, could be used to, to help better educate our kids, uh, including the, the kids of the, the employees that will be brought with this, so um, I, I'm grateful for Qualtrics, grateful that they've uh, decided to, to stay and expand in the community. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'll be voting for this, but I just wanted to, to, you know, to register my, my uh, discomfort with, with the way that tax, uh, tax increment financing is being used. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. Uh, Counselor Ellsworth?
I agree with Mr. Harding.
Thank you, and I guess um, I guess we really rely a lot on staff uh, in, in these matters. We uh, assume that they will be careful and, and uh, negotiate these types of agreements in cases where they think it will make a difference and, and not where uh, they think a development is going to happen anyway. But and this, this was a little different because there was uh, some cooperation at state level, I believe, as well, and um, I don't know if you want to make any more comments about that, Mr. Walter, but um, with, this was kind of a joint effort with the state, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. So Qualtrics did apply to the state. And they received um, just a second here, um. They've uh, they received a post-performance tax credit that will not exceed thirty two million dollars. So again, this is kind of similar to ours, is that Qualtrics has to perform in order to get any of the, either the ed tip from the state or from the tax increment from us. And so what they are proposing to do is that they will um, you know, over, over ten years, they're going to hire over a thousand employees and make a, over a forty five, closer to actually seventy million dollar capital investment in the business park.
Thank you. I think that's significant, that this is a big enough uh, thing that the state wanted to participate with us to make sure this happened. All right, is there any further um, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And I, Dave Sewell, will vote yes also, which makes the vote unanimous. If there's no objection, we will now adjourn as the governing board of the Redevelopment Agency of Provo and reconvene as the municipal council of Provo by unanimous consent.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sewell. We'll move on to uh, our action agenda and with, on, with an implied motion on item number eight, a resolution adopting the community reinvestment project area plan for the Riverwoods Community Reinvestment Project Area. This again will be presented by David Walter, um, our Redevelopment Agency Division Director, and we will open this up for public comment when he is con- uh, concluded, so if you want to make a comment, you can press star nine. Go ahead, Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item is the city half of the, of the previous, so the previous action was by the Redevelopment Agency. This is by the city. The city is adopting the Community Reinvestment Project Area Plan for the project, for this Riverwoods Community Project Area. As well as there is an ordinance, these items will be taken to the county for recording once, if they are approved and signed by the mayor slash the mayor and the chief executive officer of the Redevelopment Agency respectively. Um, again, this is an item to help us maintain uh, the status of a highly desirable employer here in the Provo area and to help them grow and continue to succeed within our community. My presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walter. Uh, we'll uh, any, any questions for Mr. Walter? Otherwise, I'll turn it to public comment. Let the public know that now is the time to indicate that you'd like to make a comment. Give it a few seconds here. All right, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there any further discussion of this item from the council? Seeing none, I will call for a vote on the implied motion.
Chair Hanley, may I make one more comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I neglected to mention earlier that tonight's actions do not automatically create the, I mean, the tax increment that we would share with our taxing, any, taxing entity partners would come back to this body and the Redevelopment Agency at a later date. And we would adopt inter-local agreements that will be after, you know, after this project area is adopted, then we will move into negotiations with our taxing entity partners and bring those agreements back to share the tax increment through an inter-local arrangement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, seeing no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Mr. Sewell.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
I will vote yes. That's Chair Hanley, uh, Vice Chair Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes, for the third vote on the same thing, pretty much.
Yes, that is, uh, pretty much the case. Thank you. The voting unanimous. We'll turn to, um, item number nine and express my appreciation for everybody's, uh, endurance levels tonight. We've got still more, plenty more to go, and appreciate all the work that we're all putting in and keep, keep going. Hope you have a candy bar or Diet Coke nearby, if that's what, if that, that's what gets you through the meeting. Uh, we'll turn to an implied motion on item number nine, a resolution amendment to the program year 2019. Action plan to incorporate additional funds from the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act into the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds. And this is presented by Mr. Dan Gonzalez, our CDBG and HOM Administrator. We heard this item earlier, um, in our work session, but, uh, uh, Mr. Gonzalez will want to, uh, review a little of that, uh, for the public. Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
I'm guessing not.
We can hear you.
There we go. Can you, can you hear me now? Very good. All right, uh, so thank you for this opportunity. Due to the pandemic, the CARES Act authorized additional funding from federal funds for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus. Can we look at the next screen, please? The act, uh, was effective as March 27, and it added a special allocation to the CDBG funds we typically receive annually to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. The allocation is of 745,997. Next screen, please. There are a few differences from the typical CDBG funds that we received under this coronavirus, uh, fund. Uh, we are to, we need to be very aware to prevent duplication of benefits. There are several sources, both federal, state, uh, and local, that are, have been made available uh, to remediate and to address, uh, the issues that have come up with COVID-19. And so we need to make sure that we look very closely that none of these, uh, costs that are being sought to be paid for with CDBGCV funds have been or will be paid with any other available funds. It also suspends, uh, the typical 15% cap to assist public service agencies. And because of the nature of the funding, uh, we need to amend the most recent either consolidated plan or actual plan that has been approved by HUD. In this case, we will be amending the 2019, uh, action plan to incorporate this funding. Um, there are some other flexibilities, um, including the Citizen Participation, Participation Plan, uh, which includes a typical 30-day comment period, which for this reason, or because of the pandemic, um, should be no less than five days. In our case, we're doing a six-day comment period. And HUD is still pending to release further notification. So there may be some changes to this. We don't anticipate there will be big things. It will be possibly more along the lines of requirements as to, uh, reporting and things of that nature. Next slide, please. So some of the eligible activities and that we are proposing to be funded come under what is considered food assistance programs. So agencies that provide, um, food assistance to individuals or have meal delivery programs um, to LMI clients, health assistance programs, uh, for agencies that provide health benefits and, uh, particularly in, in this remote, uh, remote access to, to services. Next slide, please. Other public services will include agencies that, for one reason, for to be able to respond to LMI clients and other individuals, they have either added some personnel or changed some responsibilities among personnel, and so they need to provide some funding additionally to respond adequately. With CDBG funding, um, it's not allowed to make direct payments to beneficiaries, but through public service agencies, there's the possibility to, in behalf of those beneficiaries, make subs- subsistence payments. In cases just like this one with, uh, the pandemic, where individuals may have lost income, um, there's the ability to provide up to three months of subsistence payments. Next slide. We're also looking to assist, uh, small businesses in the community. This, again, will be gap financing. Again, we need to be very careful in looking at what other sources have been or will be used. But the idea is to assist businesses to either retain, retain jobs or rehire for jobs that would be held by low-to-mother income individuals. And lastly, the typical 20% cap, uh, to be able to administer all these different activities. Next slide, please. So this is what, what is proposed to be funded. All of the agencies that are listed there with the request will be funded, but in the collaborative effort in which we have joined with Orem and, and Utah County, um, it was decided that it'd be easier to focus on serving specific agencies to make the process a little simpler. So we're proposing to, to phone boy, boys and girls in the program for childcare to first responders and providing meals to them. Uh, $15,000, $35,000 for United Way to add or pay for responsibility added to personnel, uh, to add the 201 Response Center. And finally, uh, personal protective equipment to Land Health Center. Um, we're anticipating to partner with the Housing Authority of Utah County for the subsistence payments for mortgage assistance and rental assistance. We estimate about 13 households to be held with mortgage assistance and about 15 with rental assistance. And finally, we anticipate businesses will be assisted, uh, for costs for up to three months and up to $15,000 on average, or approximately 30 businesses would be aided. Just a little, uh, idea of how the small business program will be coming. Next slide. The terms will be, again, up to 15,000 for more than three months. Um, deferred payment at 0% for the first year and forgiveness of the loan if, at the conclusion of that first year, uh, those jobs that were retained or, or people were rehired are still made available, then the assistance given will be forgiven. Or up to five-year payment plan at 0% if the jobs are no longer available. Um, we anticipate there will be, uh, an influx of interest to this, and so trying to manage this, uh, we will be asking for a $100 application fee. Um, next slide, please. And businesses will be eligible as illustrated in this slide. Again, we're looking to assist businesses that have been here, uh, for at least a couple of years, that are still in business, that there's a likelihood that will continue in business, that have not filed for bankruptcy, and that have documented losses of revenue due to the pandemic. Last slide, please. Costs eligible would be salaries, lease of mortgage payments, utilities, or other operating costs. That's the presentation. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, any questions for Mr. Gonzalez? The public is, uh, alerted that we will have public comment on this item, um, so please indicate with the star, star, press star nine on your phone and indicate that you would like to speak, but any, any comments or questions from the council first? You heard this item earlier. Appreciate, uh, the effort, Mr. Gonzalez, and, uh, look forward to the good that it can do. Any, any, uh, public comment? Give it a, uh, 30 seconds here. All right, um, bring it back to the council. Any further discussion from the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
I will vote yes, and that's George Hanley. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Okay, the voting is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Move on. Uh, an implied motion on item number 10, an ordinance amending Provo City Code to adopt additional regulations for the Class F beer license for restaurants with brewery breweries. And this will be presented by Hannah Salzle, our city council policy analyst, and Brian Jones, council attorney.
Let's just a little bit of context on this. Uh, the council has been debating, uh, I muted myself. Sorry. The, uh, council has been debating additional regulations for brew pubs as part of a potential larger alcohol policy review for some time now. Uh, there were several policies that received more broad support among the council, including these here. Sorry, I'm going to turn to the side because that's where my screen showing the, uh, ordinances is. Those that received more broad support from the council so far are shown here on the screen. It would limit, uh, brew pubs, that's the Class F license, it's exclusive to brew pubs. It would limit them to no more than, uh, 1,500 barrels of beer produced per calendar year at that brew pub. It would prohibit them from storing any equipment, materials, or associated products, uh, off of the, or, sorry, on the premises. It would prohibit the floor pa- floor space of the brew pub itself from exceeding 30% of the total floor space for the facility. It would also, uh, require service trucks loading to take place off public streets on alley-accessible loading docks or off streetways, uh, between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Finally, it would limit the total number of brew pubs in the city to one. It was initially two, but that was changed by a motion in the work meeting just earlier today. It would limit it to one brew pub per same contiguous incidence of a zone. For example, there are three SC3 zones scattered throughout the city. Each individual location of the SC3 zone could have one brew pub or a total of five in the city, including the, uh, two downtown zones. That's...
All right, thank you.
Anything you'd like to add, Brian?
I can't find my mute button. No, I don't have anything that I wanted to add. When this is, this coronavirus is all over, we're really going to miss sentences like, "I just muted myself. I can't find my mute button." I think you're muted. Anyway, uh, okay, uh, um, we will open this item up. Well, uh, unless there are any questions, uh, or specific questions to Ms. Salzle or to Mr. Jones, uh, I would like to open this up for public comment. So, uh, seeing none from the council, uh, request again that you, uh, press star nine if you'd like to make a comment. Give it a minute. All right, uh, we'll bring this back to council for discussion. And just as a reminder to the council, the land use ordinance was adopted. A Class F license was adopted with it. This is the, um, uh, sort of final stage of, uh, considering any additional restrictions on, on that license. Any, uh, comments or questions deliberation from the council? We discussed this item earlier. In case it shocks the public that we are not deliberating further about this, uh, uh, but seeing no comments, uh, from the council, then I will call for a vote on the, uh, sorry, Ms. Ellsworth, go ahead.
Yeah, just for benefit of the public, um, this is something that we've worked on for months. And, uh, these restrictions and regulations are are, um, part of a mechanism to regulate the manufacturing use that's involved with ancillary brewing in a restaurant. And the beginning, middle, and end of this process has been about compromise, so this is, uh, I don't know if it makes anyone happy. It probably doesn't make anyone happy. Um, but I suppose that is part of the compromise because, uh, I've certainly had to give a little, and I think that most of my colleagues have had to give up something. So I, I appreciate everyone who's participated in this process, and it's not something that we invented this week and are shuttling through the council on a quick Tuesday night. It's something that we've discussed multiple times. So thanks to everyone who's been involved, and, uh, yeah, just there's some background in case the public is curious.
Thank you for that information. I think that's helpful. All right. All right. Seeing no further comment, then I will indeed call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with myself. I will vote, and I am George Handley, I will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore? Whoops, you were muted, Mr. Fillmore.
A reluctant yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
All right, the voting is unanimous. We will then move on to item number 11, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code relating to permitted uses and yard requirements of the M1 light manufacturing zone. This will be presented by Mr. Robert Mills.
Good evening, council members. So just to kind of give a recap of this proposed amendment, the proposal is to amend some of the permitted uses in the M1 light manufacturing zone, specifically to allow combustible petroleum product distribution in that zone. And then also to allow a conditional use of flammable petroleum product distribution, both of which are regulated by the fire code and classified specifically from that specific zone. Additionally, this zoning amendment will remove the conditional use that's currently permitted in the zone of natural or manufactured gas storage and distribution points to help with that safety concern that the fire department has had in the past. An additional part of this amendment is to allow the director of the Development Services Department some leeway in granting some different exceptions to the yard requirements in that zone, based on a findings that whatever's being proposed would be a better situation and a more efficient and safer use of the property. Many of you are aware, we've been talking about this for a long time. This has specific reference to the Christiansen Oil property on Sixth South here in Provo. That property is in the M1 zone and has been operating continuously as a petroleum distribution point for many, many decades. And their operation is currently a legally non-conforming use. And one of the desires of this zoning amendment is to allow them to have a permitted use operation. The permitted uses that I mentioned that they would be classified under are specifically restricted to this, the block that Christiansen Oil is currently on. So everything, it would have to be north of 600 South, east of 200 East, south of 500 South, and west of 300 East. So we wanted to provide a way to make the situation there at Christiansen Oil better. Also create a, create a way that we could make the neighborhood safer and provide a way for the applicants, well, not the applicant, but Christiansen Oil, some, some assuredly as they move forward with their business. Because this has specific implications for the Christiansen Oil site, and there were concerns that were raised about that, the Christiansen Oil has submitted a, an agreement between their facility and the city, addressing some of those specific concerns that have been brought up in the past. That, the details of that will continue to be refined and agreed upon. But tonight, we're hoping to answer any further questions that you all have. I'm joined by Mr. McGinn from the, our director here, and also Fire Marshal Schofield from the fire department. And I believe L is also on for tonight's discussion. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any preliminary questions for staff before we open up for public comment? Mr. Hoben, go ahead.
Yeah, want to say thanks to the staff for answering dozens and dozens of questions on a variety of different things related to this issue. Mr. McGinn, I had one late question come in from, or a comment come in from somebody and wanted to get that answered. There was something, a concern with whether or not Christiansen actually owns some of the property that, that they built on. And if that's a factor at all in this, can, can you answer that? I sent the email to you, and I believe you're going to look into that.
I, well, Christiansen is surrounded by some residential properties. I have heard that there might be a boundary overlap in the legal descriptions between Christiansen and an adjoining property. However, Christiansen can only commit and offer an agreement that would be recorded on property and run, and a covenant that would run with the land for property that they own. And so any property that they wouldn't own would not be covered by this agreement. And they wouldn't own it and couldn't operate on it, since they're not the owner of it. And we are working on finalizing a legal description. It's not finalized yet. That is something that routinely happens. The council routinely approves rezones without a, in an ordinance and a council meeting without a final technical legal description being done. I think we're all well aware of the property we're talking about. It's the property on Sixth South, bounded by Fifth North, Second East, and Third East. And so if the council approves the text amendment, which is the issue in front of the council tonight, and thinks it would like to enter into the agreement proffered by Christiansen Oil, the typical format for that is to go ahead and approve the ordinance, and then staff works out the final details and authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement.
Other questions for staff? Mr. Fillmore?
Perhaps Robert, the fire chief. My understanding is that the city has negotiated, it will require Christiansen Oil to limit the travel routes of their tanker trucks essentially to Sixth South. Is that, is that correct understanding?
That is not correct. The current hazardous materials route coming out of the Christiansen Yard, they can go east on 600 South to State Street, or they can go west to 100 West, and then north on 100 West to 400 South to the signalized intersection, and then on to University Avenue. Those are the two acceptable hazardous materials routes out of Christiansen Oil.
Okay, I appreciate that classification. In any event, it commences at 600 South at their main entrance.
Yes.
And, and would depart in both directions off Sixth South until it has to vary to get on the, get on the university, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Second thing is, wanted to be, I recall that one of the neighbors inquired about lining the property with, with trees on the, on the certain border for aesthetic purposes. Has that been pursued at all?
That is not a subject in the agreement proffered by Christiansen Oil. My understanding is that they are, will be commenting on this item tonight, or are available to comment. And that might be something that they would be willing to do. I, I don't know the area in particular that people are talking about, and the type of need for some sort of visual buffer. But that is not addressed specifically in the agreement, nor is it specifically required in the M1 zone.
Okay. Next, Chief Miguel requested an outside audit. I understand that's been completed. Was that completed to the chief's satisfaction?
It was. We had what we consider to be another subject matter expert come and take a look at the property, take a look, try to compare what was happening at the property with the timeframes in which the things were built. And we, we received that. He made some, some, I think, some important recommendations. And we have met and continue to meet with Christiansen to see if some of those things can't be resolved. Again, a couple of those recommendations are recommendations based on the current code that weren't required when it was installed, but he thought that they were good suggestions. And so we, we will take those things up with Christiansen Oil, just like many other things that, that we will continue to talk about between Christiansen and the neighborhood to further the, the cooperation there.
I think it might be helpful to confirm on public record that the, one of the main concerns raised previously about propane tanks has been addressed for the entire M1 zone. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I would leave that to Gary McGinn. I believe that is the case.
That, that is correct.
Okay, so we've eradicated that health hazard. Last of all.
The only exception is sometimes in M1 zones and warehouses, people use propane-powered forklifts. And so there is an ability to have a small 500 gallon tank for use of their forklifts. It'd be similar to what you would see at Ace Hardware or Home Depot to fill up propane for your gas grill.
Okay, I guess my last question, you know, the, the larger concern, which we've been assured is a very remote risk, is that there might, the possibility exists that there could be a fire or explosion on site. And I appreciate very much the, the efforts of the fire department to minimize that potential risk. And I'm curious if we note the nature and extent of Christiansen Oil's liability insurance policy in case something like that happened.
I am not aware of what their liability policy is. I do know that they do have insurance, and a lot of the safety things are driven by the insurance company.
Might be helpful to know the maximum limits they have in that remote possibility. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ellsworth. Go ahead.
Mr. Fillmore asked about the trees, and if it's the same email that I got from a citizen recommending trees, they were recommending trees on someone else's property. So they said that they had trees on their property, and maybe the other properties would like trees on theirs. But I don't think that it's necessary for us to ask Christiansen Oil to donate trees. That's just my thought.
I, just to make a comment on that as well, I, I asked the fire marshal about this, and having extra trees also could possibly create another fire hazard. So there's a consideration there.
I have a question about odor. Issue came up also about, I don't know, the heat, maybe it's the heat of the summer when it's particularly bad. I raised this question earlier in the afternoon session, if there was any sense if the tanks and or warehouse would reduce the amount of the odor. And I guess there wasn't a real clear answer on that. I was rereading through emails and noticed the recommendation of odor control, that there's some sort of odor control that's, can be installed. Seems to me that would be a really valuable thing to happen for the neighborhood, especially to allay any concerns about the possibility that the odor could increase. Like I say, I'm not entirely, or maybe none of us knows for sure if the odor would increase or decrease with the tanks and the, and the warehouse and the totes less likely to be in the open. But nevertheless, you know, any, anything along those lines, I think, could be very helpful. What's staff opinion among that?
I'd like to speak, I'd like to speak to that just for a second. I, I, first of all, tanks, when tanks heat, they are designed to vent. And when they vent, that is where you get some of that odor. And there are opportunities to limit that. And I read, I'm, I'm fairly confident that I'm familiar with the email that you're speaking of. And I believe that is something that we should take a serious look at and speak with Mr. Christiansen about. I, I think that anytime we have a problem, I think it's parallel, it's a parallel problem to the trucks. And, you know, the trucks leaving the yard and going up through the neighborhood, we want to limit that the very best we can, because we want these two, we want the residents and the, the neighbors to coexist, and, and both really not know each other is there. And so one of the things that, that we are, there are several things that we're looking at that will limit the impact to the neighbors. Obviously, the, the MOU speaks to the height of the tanks, and that they won't be any higher than the, than the height of the warehouse. And those are things that I think are reasonable to continue to talk about. If the, if obviously the odor, as it vents out of the tanks, it, it, it spreads into the neighborhood, that is something that is not fair to the neighborhood, and we ought to take some serious, that we ought to give that serious consideration and work with Christiansen to do what we can to limit that. And we will continue to do that. Just as this whole process started was, how, how can we limit the impact of Christiansen Oil to the neighborhood? And I think that's one area we can look at.
I would, I would concur on that, Chief. I think that's really important. I mean, there's the safety issue, and, and I'm, I'm confident that we're addressing the safety issue as, as well as can, if we can. But there's still sort of the, you know, the, the sort of livability, both in terms of, well, I guess the trucks aren't just an annoyance, they are a safety issue as well, especially for the little children in the neighborhood, as there are. But certainly, it's an annoyance as well. And I recognize also, we've, we've had this come up with another neighbor, that not all the trucks that are the offenders here are going to Christians, going to or from Christiansen Oil. There's, so I do think whatever we can do to mark those routes and enforce them, and, you know, and Christiansen Oil can certainly help a great deal in that regard with instructions to their, to their drivers. But I would love to see sort of putting to rest any odor issues. Having lived near some foul smelling industries in my life, it really, it's the kind of thing that just, just constantly reminds you, like you're saying, it's not, it's not like they become invisible, it's quite the opposite, you're thinking about.
You bet. And we will, we will address that. And, and that will be one of those things that, that we try to evaluate how and, and when we can eliminate those problems from moving into the neighborhood.
All right, any other comments or questions from the council before we open it up for public comment? We can bring it back to the council in a moment, but let's give this a minute for anyone to raise their, call in or raise their hands. I see Mr. Bachman, please go ahead.
Yeah, hello. My name is Ted Anderson. I represent Cup Holdings, which owns.
I represent Cup Holdings, which owns the title to 554 South 300 East. And Christianson Oil proposal will affect our property. Currently, Christianson Oil is using a portion of our property for light industrial use. I think this is the property that was mentioned earlier. Zoning right now is M1 light industrial, but should be residential zoning. Our property is currently being used for M1 light industrial and single-family residential use. We are undecided on whether we oppose the proposal. But until we can resolve the issues with the boundary line and use of our property, we ask that the council table this matter.
All right. Thank you for, Bachman. I have another caller with a phone number 2570. Go ahead.
Yes, hi. This is Melissa Platt. I'm legal counsel for Christianson Oil. I'm here with Todd Christianson and also Brandon Christianson. And I'm going to let Todd Christianson speak first, and then Brandon Christianson, and then I will finish up.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to express how much I admire the honesty, integrity, and qualifications of city staff and council manifested through the course of this procedure. One example is the request for an independent fire code review on the Christianson Oil property. Fire Marshal Schofield and Chief McGill are to be praised for their humility in allowing an outside source to come and look at what they have already determined. This inspection was conducted by the fire chief of another Utah County city. And upon completion of his inspection, he reported, "I found no violations that would require a citation or immediately dangerous to life or health. The business is very well-maintained and run, especially keeping up with code requirements." Number two. Another example of the Provo city staff, mayor, and council being people of integrity. "I have personally witnessed their efforts to understand the issue, discover the facts, and to be honest and fair in their assessment, regardless of how, assessment, period, regardless of how you may vote this evening, you have restored my confidence and faith in how our government works. I truly appreciate the time and effort you have taken to understand the issue and to discover the truth. It has been my blessing to become acquainted with you and to have you together consider Christianson Oil's to comply on safety and being a good business citizen." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Brandon Christianson. I'm the youngest son of Todd Christianson. I have worked for Christianson Oil for most of my life in various capacities. And I can assure you this company values the safety of our neighbors and the safety of our employees on site each day. I just wanted to take a minute and express gratitude to the city staff and the city council for your efforts in finding a solution to this issue. And on behalf of everyone at Christianson Oil, thank you for all the time and effort you have spent in gathering the facts, shifting through misinformation, and for considering the proposed text amendment. Some neighbors have expressed concern about the proposed text amendment and the safety and integrity of our operations, along with proposed future expansion on our property. Christianson Oil's request to install additional loop tanks on its property is a request to improve the safety of our operations. Should Provo City not adopt the text amendment, our business will continue to run as usual, and our tote storage will continue to grow to meet the needs of our customers and the industry. In other words, rejecting the text amendment will not limit or reduce how much oil is stored on site, as some have expressed so much concern about. Approving the text amendment will vastly improve the safety and integrity with how our products are being stored, that being engineered steel tanks with a concrete containment. This is a much safer alternative for our neighbors, for the community, and for the environment. I urge you to adopt the text amendment as it recognizes the realities of the ever-evolving petroleum industry and resolves the uncertainty of how the non-conforming laws apply to practice and practice to Christianson Oil. Being a family business and being an integral part of the Mazor community, we understand the concerns for home and family that some neighbors have. Our hope is to improve communication to our neighbors and build relationships of trust going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just one last comment. We recently heard, in fact, I just heard through the work meeting today that there may be some boundary line discrepancies. I'm not sure where this information is coming from. We plan to do a survey and do some title research on the property to see. But this shouldn't require a tabling of this amendment. It's a simple boundary line agreement, or we will simply move our fence or modify our operations accordingly. And as I've said before, Christianson Oil, as a property owner, has certain vested rights, including the right to adapt to their constantly changing industry. And as has been discussed, what that exactly means is unclear. And so this text amendment and the accompanying agreement will give certainty to all, to Christianson Oil and to neighbors and the city, as to what will be allowed going forward and provide a safer way of doing so. And I once again want to reiterate that I too appreciate all the work that has been done on this. And I think that as Christianson Oil and the city and neighbors continue to work together, that we can continue to come to reasonable agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any comment from the public? Let's see. I just got a text saying we are trying to call in. But the meeting isn't allowing us. All the numbers we're dialing say the meeting hasn't started yet. Staff, do you have any suggestions?
Mr. Chair, you have one hand up. What I would suggest is let's give it a little bit, as these go through these, let's go give a little bit extra time for attendees to call. For attendees, if you can hear me, sometimes it helps to go kind of in the middle or the bottom of the list and not everybody grab the top or the very bottom of the phone numbers.
All right. So I'll go to, just ask for patience from Carolina, who's trying to call in, see if we can resolve that issue. I'm not quite sure what the matter might be. In the meantime, we have a call from caller 9893.
Hi, am I on?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ryan Hayes. I'm a resident up in the Joaquin neighborhood, but I've been following this discussion for months now. Yeah, well, I'm glad to see the people are trying to work together. Glad to see that the discussion is ongoing. My primary concerns, you know, I'm obviously somewhat removed, but not necessarily removed from the entire community. And I do have a lot of friends down in Mazor, and some of whom live quite close to Christianson Oil. I know that there's been a lot of concern about permitting further growth, any kind of further growth. And while I've heard repeatedly that the risks are low, doesn't change the fact that there are risks involved with allowing a commercial operation of that nature to thrive and to grow in that area. Personally, I don't feel that Christianson Oil should have to necessarily abandon its project. It would be nice, considering the, considering the fact that Christianson wants to grow, that they need, that they should find space in an area, in a neighborhood, where there is less concern from the neighborhood. That being said, I just know that, you know, we've touched on the fact that there may be slight discrepancies in, from some kind of recent, some recent study on the property. If that's the case, if there's any truth to that, we should definitely weigh in those before allowing the vote to proceed. I would highly suggest, especially if we can't get a lot of people on the phone or if we can't get a lot of clarity on that, on those specific issues, that voting on such things should be further put off. That's my opinion as someone, again, calling from Joaquin, concerned about neighbors and friends in that area. So thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I know several people are still trying to call in. I think there was some miscommunication on the call ID number. And I've sent that out to two people who have texted me. But I would also say Cliff Strachan has offered to receive a phone call to his office landline, which is 852, that's area code 801-526118, if that doesn't, if these other options don't work. All right. So we're still waiting. Let's just wait a little bit longer to see if any of these. For some reason, the ID number on the slide doesn't match the agenda. Send your number, Cliff, again.
Hey. Mr. Hanley in the council, it has now been updated. They should be able to call in. And you've got somebody at 4671 ready to go. And just a reminder, this part is actually a public comment. So you only need to allow 15 minutes total for discussion if you want to.
All right. We've had a bit of a delay here, though. It's technical. Go ahead to 4671.
Okay. Hello. And we have a few citizens gathered here tonight. So I would like to comment, but then I would like to comment, then I'd like to pass the phone on to the others here as well.
So we know?
Pardon?
How many people will be speaking, just so I know?
Six.
Okay. It's two minutes each, please.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Rachel Faverro. I'm a resident of Christianson Oil property, apparently talking about with this zoning change. And I appreciate the comments and continued questioning from the council tonight. I'm wanting to have, make sure these little details aren't falling through the cracks and I'm recognizing that the continued exposure to the neighborhood has an impact on us as well. Like Counselor Hanley and Chief McGough mentioned the odor that comes and how there are protections and filters that could be put in place to limit the exposure to the neighborhood of those things. So I appreciate that you, we are being considered in how their expansion is affecting us. What I would ask is that we would be, that it would be considered that these homes were primarily constructed and had people residing in them before the beginning of this business, even going, even though it goes all the way back to 1935. The home that I'm in was built in 1890. So families have been living here even before Christianson Oil. So I would ask that we start by enforcing the already existing agreements and laws that the city has between Christianson Oil, such as Christianson Oil went and entered into a covenant with the city in 1990, saying that when they built their north warehouse, that no hazardous materials would be stored in there, which clearly hasn't been followed. So I think before we look at expanding or changing the situation there, we should get back to square one in where the agreements were already made and make sure that everything is being followed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kanani Horito. I am a Mazor neighbor here for 20-plus years. I also live in a historic home built in 1881. I love my neighborhood and would like to just say a few things on behalf of this situation. And again, I echo some of the things that Rachel has said. I am grateful for the city council that has presented some good questions. And we would love also to have answers to some of those questions brought up recently regarding insurance and other things. But mainly, I, because this M1 is fairly new, presented to us as a neighborhood, I would request that we have additional time so that we can hopefully review as a neighborhood and come to a good agreement and understanding with what will happen moving forward with Christianson Oil. And I appreciate all the help that we've gotten so far and letting us, letting our voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Carolina Allen. I just am an eight-year resident here of the neighborhood. I'm really grateful to be here. Thank all of the city council members who've been reviewing this. And I'm so grateful that Christianson is on the call as well, the family members and the attorneys and whatnot. And I'm so grateful for the ability to have this conversation together. I think it's really important. I've had the privilege of speaking to roughly 100 neighbors and their family members, who are a little bit shocked, I guess, that they haven't had the opportunity to really understand exactly what's going on. And I too think that it would be a really valuable idea moving forward in a sustainable way for our community, for our neighborhood, to have as much input and buy-in from everybody as possible. I think it helps everybody feel like they are contributing and participating in a solution that's going to be the best for everyone. And since Todd Christianson is on the line, I just wanted to reach out and say how much we really want to create a win-win for everybody. I think it's simply that this solution isn't a win for many neighbors. So I'm just asking that if we can just kind of put our heads together and come to some kind of a place where we have a little bit of more positive feelings about the decisions moving forward, I think we would be all very much better off. And I think we can do that. I'm really hopeful. I think we have awesome neighbors that are wanting to have a win-win situation for everybody. We just feel like this proposal and this language change is not quite it. So we're hoping to have more time so we can get to where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michaela Horito. I'm 21 years old and the daughter of Kanani Horito. And I've grown up in this neighborhood, I've lived in this neighborhood my whole life. And I too just want to say that I agree with everyone who spoke before me about this issue and that we would like additional time to work with the council for a better agreement. for a better agreement. And, um, I really care about my neighborhood and, um, I think that there's, um, some sort of win-win that we can agree upon. And, um, I appreciate you guys listening to us and hearing our concerns. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Horito. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of this neighborhood and, uh, I'll try to be concise, cause I know many of you are aware that I can go on for a long time. However, uh, some concerns have been brought up and I would just like to highlight some of those. Uh, odor was mentioned, uh, not, but it's a concern to us not only because of the annoyance that the odor is, but more importantly, that there are the health effects due to petroleum-based fuels and the fumes that come from them, uh, and, uh, the public health concern that's there. Uh, I believe all these health concerns are well-known and documented, so that's something I won't go into, but, um, it is a big concern for our neighborhood. Trucks have been brought up and, and the issue of safety. And, and I can't think of any neighborhood in Provo that would be happy with having fuel tankers driving through their neighborhood. Um, in fact, just this evening at dinner, my ten-year-old son mentioned that a Christianson Oil tanker had passed right in front of our house while he was outside playing. Uh, I think that is a huge concern for me. And I, and with the different ways to get into the property, I can't imagine why they would drive through the middle of our neighborhood. Uh, I live three and a half blocks away. There's, there's just no reason why they would ever drive in front of our house, but they do and it's not that uncommon of an occurrence. Uh, the issue of property rights was brought up. That's not something that I was aware of before, but I certainly believe that that's got to be something that needs to be resolved before this issue could even be moved forward. Uh, I, I, I have to imagine that there was a good reason for granting a non-conforming status. I believe that was in the mid-seventies, some forty-plus years ago. Uh, but the very fact that it's, it's considered a non-conforming status indicates that this is outside the, the current zoning intent. Uh, and to allow for additional expansion of the business on, on the same site seems to go against the reasoning behind the current zoning designations. Um, and then lastly, a, a new agreement has been submitted that seems to be different. It seems to be different than what we had previously discussed. And so, I, along with, uh, my many neighbors, respectfully request that this item be tabled until we have sufficient time to understand the new agreement that has been presented. Thank you, and I will pass the phone over.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, council. I'm Steph. This is Ted Bueller. I am one of the newest residents of the Mazer neighborhood. I, I had moved here in, uh, nineteen ninety-five. I moved away and I officially moved back last week, so. Um, I've owned a house here for fifteen years, as most of you know. And I appreciate all the time and effort and meetings and discussion and policy searches and coded, code research that you guys have put into this, but it still doesn't meet the basic safety expectation that I and other people have been hoping that it would have, mainly because it looks like, uh, it allows for an increase of a hun, of eighty thousand gallons of lubricating oil and thirty thousand gallons of gasoline, right in the middle of this residential block. And that's just not a good idea anywhere, anytime. All along, you guys have been talking about, you know, this problem was passed on by previous city councils and incrementally, it's just sort of, uh, gotten bigger and bigger. And it's supposed to be the council that actually sets things straight and doesn't allow it to continue to expand, but instead just looks into getting a satellite location like most other businesses do. I very much appreciate the tough questions council asked at the work meeting and I, I appreciate the questions that you guys asked at this meeting, especially Councilor Fillmore about insurance. Uh, and I would ask you guys to, to give, uh, to hand this back to city staff and say, "We want a solid agreement that reflects all of these concerns" that we've aired at three city council meetings now and still haven't been written into the hard copy that goes into us as, uh, for the, uh, for the city council packet and table it until you get a packet from the council, from the staff, that has the, the, um, uh, the stuff that you're looking for. We really appreciate all these questions and we hope that we can come to a safe agreement. Thank you very much. And I'm the last one.
Thank you so much. All right, we have another caller at phone number nine, four, seven, eight.
Dixon, and I live. Hi, this is Lynn Wilkins Dixon. I live in the Joaquin neighborhood of Provo as well. Um, I have contacted each of the representatives and, and indicated my concerns regarding this facility and this expansion. I appreciate the fact that you brought in an outside, um, person to inspect the facility. However, my concern is, is was never one of bias with our current fire chief, but simply that fire code for the size and type of this facility is not sufficient coverage to guarantee safety, given that it is this close to residences. Um, I've had over thirty years familiarity and association with the petrochemical industry. So, I can tell you that who you really need as a city to bring in is someone from the American Petroleum Institute, one of their certified auditors, um, to go through, because the fire chief can't tell you if vent size is sufficient or about tank integrity, or any of those things are integral to the safe operation of a petrochemical facility or bulk oil facility next to residences. And as I indicated in letters that I wrote to you, just driving around the facility, I am able to spot numerous violations. And I don't think that we should reward a company for putting totes and temporary storage containers up against residences and say, "Okay, we'll let you expand if you'll use it to remediate things that you're already in violation of." And I would ask that the city also table this until you can get an agreement and get a thorough inspection of the facility to guarantee the safety of these residents and our community, both for our water quality, our air quality, and the safety of everyone in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, I'll bring it back. That's been, uh, more, more than fifteen minutes of public comment and it's been very much appreciated. Um, but, uh, in the interest of time, I'm going to bring it back to the council, um, for, uh, discussion. Some discussion from the council. I guess I have a question for the council, given, uh, the requests that have been made, uh, the many hours that have already been spent, I know efforts to reach out to the public, but there's a request for more time. Um, and I, I would like to know what the council feels about that. Go ahead, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, uh, I feel that, let's see, this is our third or fourth time, I think it's at least our third time that we've discussed it in a, in a council meeting. Uh, we have had, uh, I feel like a fairly thorough, um, process up to this point, uh, where the, the public's been able to, to, to weigh in. Um, I also fear that, you know, even on our sixth or seventh meeting, uh, there may be one or two more people who will always ask for more time. I, I do feel like we've, we've looked at this extensively and so, uh, I'd prefer to, to vote tonight on it. Um, and, uh, just my, my two cents on this, I, I, I do feel like, um, this has been a, a problem for, uh, at least a couple of decades, uh, because there has been some ambiguity about, uh, what the law says, uh, as far as, uh, non-conforming rights and there's been disagreements and there's been lawsuits and there's been, um, there's just been a, a whole history caused by the uncertainty, um, of, of this, this non-conforming use. And so, I think the most valuable thing that, uh, this proposed solution provides is certainty. And there, there, um, with the, with the agreement, including, uh, the Christianson Oil's willingness to, um, uh, to, uh, I don't know the right word. I'm drawing a blank on the right word, but basically renounce, um, any claims to, to non-conforming uses. Um, I think lets us start fresh and, uh, and have very good certainty on, on how the land may be used in the future. And I think that should be helpful to the business. It should be helpful to the city and it should be, uh, very helpful to, to the, to the neighbors as well. Um, I believe all of the, the safety concerns have been, um, adequately addressed. Um, and I guess, uh, I, I appreciate the, the engagement that we've had from, uh, members of the community. Um, I, I do hope that they feel like they have been heard and their concern's been taken seriously. Uh, I also appreciate, uh, the opportunity we had, uh, to, to work with Christianson Oil. Um, I know other councillors as well, um, had similar conversations, but, um, I had a, a good conversation with, uh, the leadership at Christianson Oil and, and we, we very quickly, um, discussed some, some deal points that could be included in an agreement that we felt, um, addressed the major concerns of the city, um, and its residents and in the business as well. And, uh, sometimes it's a little scary to, uh, to have these broader deal points kind of fleshed out. Uh, but then, you know, then comes the actual negotiation and how does that look on paper? And sometimes it doesn't turn out as well. But, um, I, I really appreciated that, uh, I, I felt like, uh, Christianson Oil, uh, lived up to, uh, those deal points and that we have a, a good, uh, win-win type agreement put for us. And, and, uh, so I would like to vote on that this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. Ms. Ellsworth, go ahead.
I was curious if staff can tell us, um, if there is any detail on the adjacent property that's not owned by Christianson Oil, but maybe leased by Christianson Oil? And if there is any reason that that should hold us back?
In looking at the, uh, issue that there might be a boundary dispute between, uh, the residence, that one residential piece of property and Christianson Oil and the allegation that Christianson Oil, uh, that their operation is on that property. Um, well, if that in fact is the case, then Christianson Oil will, will have to move their operations off that piece of property. And the, Christianson Oil can only operate on property which it owns and subject to this, uh, agreement. And so, really, while that may be, uh, an interesting thing that Christianson Oil is going to have to work through and deal with, um, I don't really see that it affects, uh, Provo City and any agreement that, uh, we have from Christianson Oil that they have proffered. And especially the ordinance. So, technically, what the council has in front of you is the ordinance. Now, this boundary dispute, the ordinance, text amendment for the M1 zone, that boundary dispute plays no role on that. Um, and the underlying property owner, the attorney, uh, stated tonight that they think that they would like to, the owner would like to have that property rezoned into residential, which we think would be a good idea to eventually do. And we've already opened up a file in our system to be able to do that. And, and so, whatever, as we go along and we, to rezone the property correctly, we'll have to get this property dispute or this boundary, uh, clarified. And we do this routinely. Uh, the council will pass a, a rezone ordinance without a final, uh, property description. And then staff works through those issues to get it done. And so, this is no different than our, our normal course of action, how we operate. So, I really don't see it as affecting what's happening here tonight.
I have two requests, uh, for comment from, first from Mr. Jones and then from Chief Miguel. Um, and Ms. Ellsworth, I note that you want, uh, to further ask questions, but let me just pause to let them comment.
Great, thank you, Chair. Handley, I just wanted to make a logistics comment or a procedural comment. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about the agreement, but, um, as Gary just mentioned, he, he talked about our normal procedure and I think that this is, uh, very similar to our normal procedure, that often these agreements, um, that the, the term, in fact, I think I said to some of you in an email earlier, that it's actually very rare for us to even have the, even have a draft agreement at the time that these kinds of approvals are brought to the council. That usually what the council does is just approves a broad outline of the, of the, of the main points that should be in the agreement and then authorize the mayor to negotiate and, and, um, and execute the agreement. And along with that, I wanted to say that our, our normal procedure is also to include language in the ordinance that makes it so that the ordinance is not actually effective until the final agreement is signed and executed. And along with that, we have, and I believe Hannah has it, have, we have such an alternate version of the ordinance drafted, but it is not the one to which the implied motion applies. So, for clarity for the council members, if you take a vote right now on the implied motion, that would be simply to approve the text amendments to the zone change without any reference to the agreement. If the agreement is desired and you want to substitute the version of the ordinance, uh, that refers to the agreement, that would require a motion. Does somebody make a motion to substitute, uh, the version of the ordinance referring to the agreement, uh, as, as that version of the ordinance to which the implied motion applies, if that makes sense?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, Chief Miguel?
Well, I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to say, before this conversation goes much further, I just wanted to assure the council and the neighborhood that we have been listening very closely. And staff will, staff in, will, uh, we assure you that we are going to work with, with the Christiansons and work with the neighborhood. And, uh, there are, there are things that we want to get started on. There's things that we want to, um, uh, we wanted to, to figure out what we're going to do with that north building. We want to take care of these things. We need the text amendment in order to do some of those things, because they're going to require, um, some, some physical changes to the property. But for those things that are affecting the neighborhood and, and, you know, I heard a great suggestion about trying to bring in somebody that, uh, somebody that is an absolute, um, expert on this kind of, this kind of facility. And again, um, I am, I am all ears to have somebody come in and provide us some direction that, that may have suggestions as to how we can coexist here in this, uh, in the Mazer neighborhood. So, I just wanted to assure everybody, we're listening and the approval of this tonight, if you choose to approve this tonight, uh, we promise to move forward with, with, um, uh, a listening ear and with the full understanding that we need to address the concerns of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Ms. Ellsworth, do you want to follow up with some more questions?
Oh, I don't have any more questions, more of a comment. I just really appreciate Gary and Chief Miguel and everyone who has put a lot of time and a lot of effort into this. And I know that they're sincere and trying to find solutions that work for everybody. And I really appreciate that. And, um, I've met with, uh, many citizens in the area, tried to understand their concerns. And I've offered many Zoom meetings so that I could connect them with Gary and Chief Miguel, who have more answers than I do. Um, and I fielded phone calls and emails and there was a virtual neighborhood meeting and this has had a public hearing multiple times. Um, and I just, I just really hope that the folks who live in that area understand how sincere we are in trying to find a solution that works for them and in listening to them. Um, and safety is, I can't think of anything more important for the city than safety. So, um, hopefully, they, they see that, um, if everything can't be resolved, that at least safety concerns are resolved. And, um, thank you to everyone who's participated in this, uh, problem-solving experience. And I hope that we can advance this, uh, M1 update tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ellsworth. Other comments or questions from the council or discussion? Uh, maybe I'll make a, a comment, um, or two. This has been a really difficult thing, uh, for me. For one, I just hate to see so much, uh, of a chasm between the, uh, a, a group of citizens and, and our city and our staff. Um, I'm trying to think-
and our staff. I'm trying to think of the analogy that if I had some sort of like family rift in my extended family and I needed someone to go in and negotiate, I would put Chief Miguel right at the front. And if, because if he can't win people's trust, I don't know who can. And it's been a bit heartbreaking to hear some of the distrust that I sense from some of the neighbors in that area, because I have such confidence in him and his goodwill. And I think you, we all heard some of that reflected in his commitment just now. So I, it's been a little sad for me. And it's also been a little bit sad that, as important as these ongoing concerns are, well, first of all, I've said to many people in the neighborhood that I've spoken to, I think they ought to give themselves more credit for having been heard and been listened to, because a lot of what's happening is precisely because of their concerns and their persistence. And if I were in their shoes, you know, I would be doing a lot of the same kind of work that they're doing. I think I would just want to, you know, for what it's worth, I just want to say, I actually think we're more on the same page than some people think. And that even though there are different interpretations about what's the right path forward, I don't think it's productive to, at this point, to assume that any one party here, whether it's Christianson Oil, the neighborhood, our city council, or our city staff, are not invested in safety, are not invested in trying to make this a livable relationship between the two. So my biggest hesitancy in delaying this any further is only because I'm not sure what changes going forward. And maybe if it gives some teeth to the discussions going forward, which are ongoing, to consider this tonight, then I'm more inclined, although ideally, you know, I'm feeling I may be more patient with this than others, but ideally, I wouldn't mind giving this a little more time to resolve some of the property boundary questions or other kinds of questions that are there. But again, I don't feel strongly about that because of my concern that I don't know that it would be fruitful unless there was a real upswell, I think, of goodwill and trust moving forward. And maybe I just need to be fair about why I'm saying what I'm saying. I've seen lots of reasons why this agreement is a positive and why the text amendment is a positive, but I haven't seen enough recognition of that. And that's been, it's been a little bit hard, because I feel like I'm talking to two very different narratives. We are concerned about tank height. We are concerned about making sure that there's not too much liberty taken with setbacks. We are concerned with safety. These other issues that have come up, I think we remain concerned about. Our staff have looked at an independent review and maybe there's more to be done there. And it sounds like Chief Miguel is open to that. So I see a lot of good that's come from this that is in the interest, again, of sort of making this a livable relationship between the two. Christianson Oil has rights to continue to do their business. And some of their business may require some adjustments and maybe even expansion of some kinds. And there's a real, live question about whether or not their expansions would be better or worse than if we did or didn't pass this. And it seems to me that we're on a much clearer path going forward and allowing them to do their business in a safer way. And if it does mean that there's an increase in some storage, I don't know where the boundary line on that question is exactly, but it does seem to me that that's not the only question at stake. There is a question of safety. There's a question of odor. There's a question of other issues pertaining to moving totes into tanks or into warehouses that ought to be recognized as a positive gain in this process, and that's part of what motivates it. Anyway, I've probably said enough, but I appreciate the patience and hard work of many. Mr. Hoben?
Yeah, so I can, well, first of all, thanks, Mr. Handley, Chair Handley, and everyone else for their thoughts and words today. It seems like there's some new information, but that we can still move forward. And then that would then be on Christianson to have to figure out, so to speak. So I can understand the desire of the homeowners to not have this business next door. On the flip side, it's been there. And so, you know, as people have mentioned, it's been there for a long time. And we can't afford to move it. You know, we've heard our number is high as 50 million. Maybe it's only half that much. I don't think that 99% of the citizens in Provo want to pay tens of millions of dollars to move this business. So we have to come up with some other solution. And, you know, determine, I guess, if they're safe. I have heard a lot of feedback from the residents, but essentially, every safety concern has been refuted. So I think at this point, you know, we have to trust the information we have. We had an outside auditor from another fire department take a look at it, and didn't find anything either. Sure, there may have been minor infractions, but those have been corrected over the years and are corrected. So, you know, then you're looking at kind of quality of life and how do we, you know, deal with the quality of life concerns of the people living in the area with balancing the fact that the business, we don't want to put a business out of business or, you know, impact them so negatively or make it so hard to do business that, you know, the 30 or 40 homeowners that they employ, you know, have, you know, the consequences that might impact their employees. So we just have to find something that's a balance. I think the reason I think that where we're at now is a pretty good balance is because, as the chair stated, you know, at this point, the only other option would probably be for us to lawyer up and try to, you know, get them to stop growing based on a gallon volume, you know, basis or something like that. And that could be an option, but then at the same time, it's questionable whether the city would prevail. And then all leverage would be lost to try to get something done. So the way I see this is not going all in on our poker chips and trying to find a compromise that's kind of in the middle that addresses the big picture concerns that a lot of the residents have. So I look at it like they've offered to add a warehouse where they can put the totes in and it will be sprinkled and safe, safer than it is right now with having them stored outside. So they'll be out of sight and in a safer way, in a safer, stored in a safer manner. And they've offered not to have tanks any taller than they have now at this point. So from an aesthetic standpoint, you know, nothing really will change there. So, you know, from my perspective, I think, like Chair Handley stated, there's some really good things coming out of this compromise. Nobody's getting everything they want. Christianson is going to have to invest a lot of money to build the warehouse and move those totes and such. So, you know, if we decide to vote on it tonight, I feel like we've done our due diligence as a council. We've listened. I've read every email that's come in. I've read every comment. I've tried to take phone calls and answer phone calls. And so if we decide to vote on it, I think we're in a pretty good spot from my perspective. And that Christianson has done a decent job of trying to accommodate and compromise. And that's, you know, we could go for broke on this, but I don't think that's going to make anybody happy. And the result will be questionable as far as our favor. So I am in favor of a compromise approach. And I think that's where we're at with the current agreement.
Let me remind the council that if we are going to vote on, if we do feel that the agreement should be part of our vote tonight, we will need a substitute motion for that to happen. Mr. Harding?
I'd like to move that we replace the implied motion, or what the implied motion is to be the motion that includes the agreement that was proffered by Christianson Oil.
I will second that.
All right. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. Ellsworth?
The motion was to advance the agreement of Christianson Oil?
Yes. And in this sense, just to be clear, that the vote is not, at this particular moment, to approve the text amendment. It's to substitute the version of the ordinance that you will be voting on with the version that refers to and approves negotiation and execution of the agreement.
That's, yeah, I'm still a little confused. I thought we were voting on the ordinance text amendment, but...
Yes. So what happens, so the ordinance text amendment doesn't, as it currently stands, does not say anything about the agreement. Okay? So in order to approve the agreement, you need to substitute a different version of the ordinance. Hannah, do you have that that you can put up on the screen? This is, so this is the substitute version. So the motion is to substitute this version of the ordinance into your agenda so that that will then be what you vote on later, whether to approve or not.
Okay. But most of this, sorry?
And that version of the ordinance both makes the text amendments to the code and approves and authorizes the negotiation and execution of the agreement. And the text amendments do not actually become effective until that agreement is actually executed.
Okay. So this new motion would accomplish those two things. It would change the M1 zone for all M1 zones, and then it would, it would approve that agreement. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion of the, yes, Mr. Sewell?
Just a clarification on the phrase for all M1 zones. I thought this was only applying to this one instance of the M1 zone.
I don't know if Gary wants to take that. It purports to be a citywide M1 change, but then some of the individual provisions, I don't remember now if it's all of them. I don't think it is all of them. Some of them only apply within a certain geographic radius.
That's correct, Brian. So Hannah, if you'll scroll down just a little bit. So the two uses that we're adding to the zone that allows for distribution of combustible petroleum products and the conditional use to allow distribution of flammable petroleum products, those have a specific geographic limitation to that block where Christianson Oil is. But it's important to, that this actually applies to the entire M1 zone so that we take out the propane distribution, propane and natural gas distribution.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
All right. So if there's no other discussion of the motion, then we'll call for a vote on the substitute motion that was made. Harding. And I'll begin with Mr. Harding.
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Shipley?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Voting is unanimous on the substitute motion. So now we need to vote on the newly substituted motion, correct, Mr. Jones?
Yes. You would now call for a vote on the implied motion. It's just that the implied motion now applies to a different exhibit than it previously did.
Got it. Mr. Sewell, you have a comment?
Yes, just one thing. I feel like we've come a long way, and I don't think we're quite finished. There's a few issues that have been raised that I hope will be explored some more, but I'm comfortable passing the baton at this point to the administration to finish out those details. And I really appreciate the effort and the attitude of staff in working with the neighborhood on this.
Thank you. All right. So I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Hoben?
Yes.
Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And I, George Handley, will vote yes. Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
All right. Voting is unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Chief Miguel, especially for your offer to continue the conversation. And I would just echo what Mr. Sewell said. We recognize that there's still some things to iron out and conversation to be had. And we know that it's in good hands with the administration and your people. And we are grateful for all the effort. And we plead for patience and forgiveness if there are people in the neighborhood who are still unhappy with this. And we hope that over time, we can win their trust in ironing this out in a way that's satisfactory to all concerned. Thank you. All right. Let me, it's 8:33. We have two more items that are not necessarily going to be fast, but I just wanted to point out the clock. And what I said to the council earlier is, you know, we've always had the policy that we'll kind of check in and see where we're at at 9:00 PM and see if we can wrap things up. So I just wanted to mention that as we enter into these last two, well, technically, they're three, but they're sort of two items that are attached to one another, Item 1218. So we'll move on to Item 12, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code to establish a critical hillside overlay zone. And we'll have Mr. Brandon Larson, city planner, make a presentation.
Hey. Thank you, council. Grateful for the opportunity to present this item to you. So you've seen this a couple of times at a work session. And just for the sake of the public that's listening in, this is a proposal to protect the hillsides. What we've essentially got here is an ordinance to protect, I think, the two key words we keep using is the ecology and the hills. And so we have put forward a text amendment as well as a map, map identifying the properties that would be included. Again, this is, what this is, what we're essentially proposing is an overlay zone. We're not proposing that anybody's property, the underlying zoning wouldn't be changed for anybody. But what this would do is certain people would have, certain properties would have additional requirements to bring about those foothill requirements that have been proposed. The other thing that I guess is important to hit home fairly quickly is that this is, this is about aesthetics. And it's not about engineering standards. It's not an effort to take anybody's home or to, you know, stop anybody from developing. It's, in a lot of ways, a set of development, design standards to help development blend into the foothills. And so we'll kind of, I guess, talk a little bit about where this application's been. It's been to the planning commission a few times now. Most recently, they recommended approval based on the idea... the idea that there were a few things that they wanted the city council to consider. A few policy issues they felt were better resolved by the council. Those issues are related, those issues are encouraging reclamation, encouraging clustering, the development, or clustering of development, ridge lines, zone boundaries and limits of disturbance. And so, reclamation and clustering, what we did, I'll address both of those kind of at the same time. We, we told the planning commission, we felt that there were issues related to the, that there, those two issues are, are complicated, and we feel like it's going to take a few more months to really adequately address those questions, whether to, you know, incentivize the reclamation of blighted hillside areas. We feel like, you know, that's, that's going to take a little bit of time. Perhaps if, if the city feels like it's appropriate to incentivize reclamation, you know, one thing to look into is a transfer of development rights. Something like that could take a little while to develop. So, we, we recommend to the city council, as, as we did to the planning commission, to to, to address those two items in a subsequent, or not necessarily subsequent, but in a, in a near-future application. Ridge lines, we're going to leave that for David Day of staff. He, he's going to be able to show you some maps and, and and I'll just say one or two things about ridge lines. We started out with a pretty high number of ridge lines. I think somewhere around in the neighborhood of 50 ridge lines. And we now have trimmed that back to, I think, around 10 or 12 ridge lines, just including the most prominent ridge lines in the, in the foothill areas. So, as far as zone boundaries, the big issue there is islands. There's a number, there's a handful of islands. I don't want to say a lot. There, there's a handful, especially up in the foothill drive area. They're, they're, they range from three quarters of an acre to somewhere around 10 to 13 acres. And so, there's, there's a question of whether or not those little islands should continue to, if, if they should be included, included in the zone boundaries. We feel that, staff feels like we've continued to whittle away at the zone boundaries and are concerned about additional exclusions from zone boundaries. Limits of disturbance. Planning commission wanted to try to soften that up a little bit. Again, limits of disturbance, the key thing there is a kind of a 40/60 ratio. Forty percent of your lot, you can disturb, 60% you can't. You leave it in natural vegetation. The planning commission recommended, and we've brought this forward to, forward to you with for your consideration, that we add an additional 10% allowance for, for landscaping. So, that ultimately someone could disturb, you know, half of their lot and leave the other half in natural vegetation. I think the limits of disturbance is a pretty important element of this ordinance. The, it, it actually helps a lot with both of those keywords of ecology and aesthetics. You, you keep the vegetation, keep the vegetation healthy and, and there on the foothills and, and having that vegetation is, beautifies, helps to beautify the foothills. So, those are the key, those are some of the issues that the planning, the most important issues of planning commission. Those are the issues the planning commission wanted the city council to consider or recommended they consider. A, a couple of key points, or a couple of additional thoughts here. Cemetery, cemetery lots, there was a recommendation or a thought that we should exclude those from the zone boundaries. What we did, rather than to cut out like east lawn from the, the CH zone, we, we, we just excluded cemeteries from being, they're excluded from having to meet the CH zone requirements. That, that's the proposal. And then, I did, after the work session, it was brought to our attention that there was a parcel, 203257 owned by Paul Perry that has a home on it. And I'm recommending to, to the council that we remove that parcel from the map. Frankly, it, whether you do or you don't, I, I think the ordinance, the way it's written, would exclude that parcel from the CH zone requirements anyway. But I think for clarity, I think it'd be good to remove that, that map. And, and just a couple, one more point on the limits of disturbance. The limits of disturbance. So, if you take a 20-acre parcel and you, you can only include 40 acres or 40% of that in your limits of disturbance. That's not saying, okay, you've got 20 acres and you can only include eight acres in your subdivision plot. You can include all 20 acres in your plat. You just, you cannot, when you divide up those lots, each lot separately will have to meet that 40/60 ratio. And then, of course, they've got the, we've, we've added that 10% allowance for landscaping. We're worried that there may be some confusion on that, and so we just want to make sure that it's clear that that, that 40/60 or 60 ratio is applied on a lot-by-lot basis. And it wouldn't be applied on a kind of a mother lot situation. So, I think David Day has some ridge line data for you to, to look at. And, and if you have any other questions, I'm definitely here to answer, so.
Thank you. Why don't we turn to Mr. Day and then see if there are any questions?
If I could share my screen, I'll, I'll be able to go through that map with you. Okay, I'm going to start on the, the south end, if, if that's okay. And just kind of work my way north. This is Buckley Draw. So, we've identified a ridge line coming down right there. It was noted in the work meeting that we're, sometimes we're outside the boundary of the CH zone, but just for visual reference, it, it was kind of nice to kind of follow the ridge a little bit, a bit beyond the zone, so you can kind of get an idea of where it's coming from. If we go over to Slate Canyon, we'll have those prominent ridge lines that are right at the front of Slate Canyon. There's two on the north side and one coming down on the south side. And then, as we go north by Wy Mountain, there's going up the mountain side, there is some property right there that has three ridge lines coming down out of it right there. And then, over to Rock Canyon, right at the mouth of Rock Canyon, we've got these ridge lines there. And you'll, you'll notice there's a a yellow line going up the middle, and that would be the ridge line. And then, the shaded area to each side would be 100 feet to each side of that line. And that, that's the the amount of affected area that they have to stay back from a ridge line. Then going north, we have the ridge line that comes down up above the East Lawn Cemetery. And then, north of that, we have this ridge line here. Incidentally, that ridge line just happens to be almost the property line between the Provo City-owned property and privately-owned property. So, that ridge is essentially a boundary between our city property and the private property along there. Then there's another two ridge lines that are at the mouth of Provo Canyon as you start up the canyon there. And like Brandon said, we we eliminated probably 40 ridge lines and narrowed it down to this these. So, if you have any questions, I can zoom in on different areas if you're interested in where these are.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Before I open it up for public comment, I see a couple of hands up from the public. All right, we'll start with caller 1438. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Sharon Memmott from Provo, and I just wanted to add, when I listened to planning commission, the other suggestion that I heard that they wanted addressed was the hodgepodge nature of the map. To my personal comments, having read through multiple iterations of this new overlay, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into it, especially the new definitions and the grandfather clause. I don't know what else to call it. That being said, I wonder why the map keeps being shrunk. I wondered why not let the map include all the way down to University Avenue, since that would take in pretty much all of the areas in question. Yes, including my home. This really doesn't have that many severe restrictions on it compared to other parts of our already existing building code, which this refers to, since it is just an overlay. Those things would have to be met for any new development or remodels. This is merely a tool to give better direction to future developments as they may want to be part of this area. I believe the critical hillside overlay zone is a great idea to direct the future development of some of what we all love about what is unique about Provo, including bringing the map back to the original boundaries. I believe it's time to move forward with this overlay zone, which could then give good direction to those with hopes to build in our beautiful city. Thanks again for all your time on this.
Thank you, Ms. Memmott. Good to hear from you, even though we can't see you. Next caller, 2443. Go ahead.
Hi, hi all. This is Kay Nelson. I'm a resident of Provo, and I'm so grateful for so many hours and for the council and staff listening to the concerns of so many residents on this topic. It has been a crucial topic for at least the past year, if not further back. The foothills are beautiful, and the trails accessed are so important. And this overlay document is an important tool to preserve the look and feel and nature of the foothills and the gateways to those trails in the foothills. I recognize that concessions have been made, and I'm grateful to the council and staff that have listened to residents for kind of a, a give-and-take. I know things have changed since the original plan, but people have been kind and civil, and I appreciate that. But I hope that this document does what was intended when it was first started, and that is to preserve something important and wonderful for citizens now and for many decades to come. I think making this critical decision now on what our foothills are and what they can be for the future is critical, and that we want to have what they look like now and not have it, have what it looks like in Draper or Traverse Mountain or the, the other communities that are now clawing back or trying to claw back some of the green space that they've allowed to be developed. So, I appreciate your efforts, and hopefully this will, this overlay zone document will work as intended to, to preserve these beautiful foothills aesthetically and naturally, and for all those who love to go up into the foothills and use them. So, thank you so much, all of you. I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. All right, caller 9005. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I've never done this this way. So, this is Angela Merritt calling from Provo. And I just wanted to thank the council, the staff for writing this critical hillside overlay zone thus far. I do have some of the same concerns that Sharon Memmott, that so many things were taken out. At the planning commission meeting, so many more ridge lines were indicated, particularly in the northeast corner. So, I'm a little concerned that so many were taken out. But on that note, probably we just need to go forward. I'd just like to reiterate that I'd like to see the council pass this. This is part of a bigger vision. And I don't think we can really go forward with the bigger vision, particularly for this area and for the rest of the city, without kind of getting this in place. This is part of that, and then going on and rewriting that general plan and including agriculture and the issues of density and everything along. This is just kind of part of it, and I, I encourage you to pass this. And, and this is for the, the greater good of everyone and, and not just singling out individuals and their needs. So, I, I thank you for all your work, and I hope that you're able to pass this tonight.
Sorry, I was muted myself. I see that there are a few more callers, but they might be calling for another item. I don't know. I'll give it the, just a minute. But while I'm waiting to see if any others raise their hand, I should mention that item number 13 is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of multiple east bench properties to include them in the critical overlay zone. There have already been some comments about the map, and of course, we were just looking at examples of the map. I just wanted to make sure that those are two separate items that we have to vote on separately, but we can hear public comment on them collectively, in case that wasn't already obvious. It seems like comments thus far have alluded to the maps as well. So, seeing no other public comment, I'll bring it back to the council, and I apologize to the council. I think I went quickly to public comment, and I, just as I was doing so, I saw Mr. Shipley and somebody else, I can't remember who it was, had their hand up. So, please feel free to ask your questions. Mr. Shipley, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah. I, I was curious if there is a size, you know, I, I think I heard that we cut off at a quarter acre smaller, you know, island parcels. We've removed them from the map. My question is, would the whole committee be supportive, the whole subcommittee be supportive if we just upped that? You know, is there some level that you can up that to, to remove other small island properties? There were some concerns from our work meeting that we might need to look at removing some of those, and I just wonder if there'd be support more broadly for this, if we could remove, you know, then by using an acreage number instead of, you know, looking around the property to see what's around it?
I guess my question would, I would steer that question to our staff maybe for a recommendation on that. I mean, I guess the question is whether or not the acreage makes a difference in terms of the... And maybe that doesn't matter to, maybe that's not, maybe I shouldn't be implying that's what you are motivated by, Mr. Shipley. I guess I'm just curious why the acreage would matter.
Well, it, it seems like we've already started down that road since we've eliminated, you know, really small parcels. I wondered if by upping that amount by some level, if Bill or Dave would then be supportive, excuse me, councillor, Fillmore councillor Sewell would be more supportive generally of moving forward. There were some concerns earlier about these smaller island parcels, and I just wonder if that would get their support. David?
Well, I, I I still have a hard time with the idea of applying this inside already-developed areas. That that would still be a concern for me. I, I think- I think it's not so much the size from my standpoint.
As for me, I share the general concern that Dave has, but I would probably be okay with a compromise if we just, you know, excluded really small parcels. I'm not sure what that magic number is, but the idea of having an acre or less, for example, bound by this overlay zone, this didn't make a lot of sense to me.
Can I interrupt this for just a second? There is one more public comment that was, you're having technical difficulties raising the virtual hand, so to speak. So if I could just go back and allow caller five two nine six to go ahead and talk.
Yeah. Hey, guys. Hey, George and Dave and others. This is Paul Perry, and I know I promised you, George, I wouldn't call in anymore, so I gave you a huge apology. I would send it in so someone could read it for me, but I just, I didn't know how to do that. So anyway, Sharon, good to hear your voice on here. I've always admired you in all these meetings, by the way, in the past, in several meetings over the years. But you asked a question like, well, why are we removing some of these properties? I can tell you, I'm one of those, okay? I represent a group of people that are, what's the word, stressed out, were upset. I have two disabled daughters, and they're depending on my actions this evening. And so I wasn't going to say anything, but if I don't speak up, you know, rights, property rights are lost. Today's council meeting in the morning, a question was asked, are these arbitrarily selected, these properties? And my answer to that is yes, they are. I sent an email with an example among hundreds, and this is just one example, this is among hundreds, with properties worse off than my own. Now, Brandon and Bill just stated that, you know, suggesting maybe they can remove mine, but there are other people who are just as much hurt by this, and they're afraid to speak up. It's a threatening situation because they don't have the money to hire a lawyer. I've hired three lawyers. Tonight, I have one attorney on the phone here, along with a member of the state, and they're listening in to represent me and my complaints at the state level. So when we talk about these examples, it's not just my property where my home is on, I'm almost finished, by the way. It's also my vacant property, which is developed, it has a grated top on top of it with a road cut up it, and it's used frequently for a business to have beehives. So I pay R one ten taxes for everyone's children, but my children can't even attend a public school because of their disabilities. And I adopted them out of a situation from Europe where they were going to die there in an orphanage. If you take these rights away from people like me, we suffer. I'm just asking that you have some compassion on us and understand. Thank you, George. I appreciate you giving me some time.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Sorry for the interruption, but I wanted to make sure he had a chance to make a comment. Mr. Sewell?
So I really think this is more defensible and explainable if it's portrayed as, you know, you look up at our foothills, and that's what we're trying to protect on the outskirts of our city. For me, it gets, it's sounding more arbitrary if we just do it by a size limit. So anyway, that's my feeling that if we limit it to the outskirts and areas that aren't developed, that it'll be, it'll be a better-looking map, it'll be easier to defend, and people will have a feeling that it's more fair.
Any other comments or questions from other council members? Not particularly interested in those who are not on the subcommittee to weigh in on this. Ms. Ellsworth?
I think that these are good guidelines, good regulations. Obviously, they don't prohibit development in these areas, but they would improve the quality of development in these sensitive areas, and that's something that I appreciate. I have long been an advocate for quality housing and improving the overall quality of housing and development in Provo. So I think that it's a great addition to our zoning tools, and I appreciate the work of the subcommittee.
Thank you. Any other comments or feedback, maybe specifically following up on Mr. Shipley's question? I mean, I feel like maybe I said my piece earlier, but, you know, I don't... I haven't been able, I haven't been persuaded that there's... If this is the right thing to do for the foothills, I think that's the question, right? Is this, is this the right kind of set of guidelines for development in sensitive areas? And if it is, then I think it's fair to apply it where those areas could be vulnerable to developments that would otherwise degrade them if it weren't for the overlay zone. And if we're not willing to apply it in that way, then I, you know, I mean, I'm not going to die on this sword. I want to pass this ordinance, and if, and if the majority of the council feels like they want to eliminate all islands, then I will move forward. I would not be happy with that because I think it loses a lot of potency as an ordinance. I think it loses a lot of effectiveness in areas where it could make a difference. But I think, I think the logic of it is sound. I think the principles that guide it are very strong. I think we've consulted a lot of good resources to design it in the way that it's been designed. And so it feels like to me that we're showing sort of half-baked confidence in it if we're not willing to apply it anywhere where it would be useful for it to be applied. So I'm not, I'm not persuaded that there are reasons why an island that's surrounded, like I said earlier, I think a lot of those islands are already islands for reasons that have to do with the quality of the land. And I identified earlier in our morning meeting this morning, the Foothill Subcommittee, you know, one of those, one of those islands is right by my house, and I can tell you, people walk by there precisely because it's open space. You know, it's a value to those who are living there. And I can't pretend that this ordinance won't have some negative impacts on some people. And I hope Mr. Perry at least is reassured that we've tried to be accommodating to his concerns. I don't think, I think some of his concerns go well beyond this ordinance. They have a lot to do with the thirty percent slope and some other concerns, but I'm not, I'm not persuaded that this can't be an enhancement of property values when it's used right. So that's why I still feel inclined to just leave it as is and move forward. But, you know, like I say, I don't want to, neither do, I don't want to die on this sword, and I don't want to make it a contentious issue, but I do think, I guess, you know, we need to, we need to come to some resolution on what's in or out and come up with a good reason why it's in or out, so that we can move forward. So I think Mr. Harding, let's see, Mr. Shipley had his hand up first, and then Mr. Harding.
Yeah, so my purpose of the question is because I'm very supportive of this, and I would like to see it passed. And I was concerned earlier today that, you know, if we didn't come to some kind of agreement, you know, at least among the subcommittee, that might not move any further, or it might get watered down even more, you know, than, with more time. And so that was my primary purpose for that. I do think there is, you know, I think there's some logic behind cutting out some parcels of smaller size because if you have, you know, the forty percent, you know, area that can be disrupted and the lot is small enough, you effectively make it undevelopable, right? You create a situation where somebody's got a third acre, and they can only put a house on, you know, forty percent of it and only, you know, do landscaping for ten percent, that might make it so they just can't develop on it. So I, you know, maybe that's already been addressed, but it seems like there is a size at some level that shouldn't be part of the critical overlay. And it's, and the quarter acre, maybe that's, maybe that's where we've drawn the line. But I was just trying to determine if the subcommittee would be supportive by taking out some amount of these, you know, smaller islands so that we could proceed, because I really want this for Provo, but I, but I also, you know, I'd love to have us feel like we're on the same page and in agreement on how it should look.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Chair. I also am very supportive of this overall effort. I don't feel necessarily strongly about, you know, kind of these fine details. And so I do kind of look, you know, for recommendations of those who have really looked into it. And unfortunately, there's, you know, some disagreement among the subcommittee members. But at this point, I think I would lean towards relying on the staff recommendation. And I feel like there's been an effort to make accommodations, an effort to really understand concerns. And I'm hopeful if something was missed that as we, you know, it could be rectified in the future. But I think at this point, I would support moving forward with the proposal as recommended by staff.
Okay, well, is, are we, I'm looking at the clock. It's nine oh eight. Are we close to motion on the implied, or vote, ready to vote on the implied motion? Or is there a substitute motion? I'm not hearing anything as regard, so I'm going to call for the vote, if that's okay. Well, okay, I have a quick question about policy here. There is a question, does any council member desire, consider this item again at the next council meeting? I thought we had already considered this item. Is it because there were significant amendments that it's somehow technically considered a new item?
Well, I think it's because of the noticing issue that it got returned to Planning Commission and that the Planning Commission meeting was just last week. So technically, this is the first hearing after the properly noticed Planning Commission hearing.
Mr. Fillmore, you have a question or comment?
A comment. I guess I want to make my position clear. This has been a fairly arduous process on this committee. I think it's become far more complex than we thought it would be at the outset. The original intent was simply to protect the aesthetics of the foothills that we all appreciate so much. But the devil's in the details, right? And so I feel very strongly about the foothill ordinance as a general matter. I think its goals are laudable, and I think the staff has been extraordinary in the effort they put forward to try to accommodate the various concerns that have arisen. I just, along with Dave Sewell, however, I just feel like it doesn't feel right to me to burden these small islands with the overlay. I mean, we've said it over and over again that, you know, we're not forbidding development. We're simply adding some restrictions in order to protect the foothills. But I think to the extent that most of these islands are already on the thirty percent plus slope, I mean, the current zoning ordinance probably precludes their development. I just don't know that we need the added complication of having these little islands. And so I guess I would propose a substitute motion, and that would be that we adopt the critical overlay zone the way it is, with one caveat, and that is that we exempt any parcel less than, less than half an acre. And that doesn't get us as far as Dave Sewell would like, and I'm sensitive to his perspective as well, but it's got to be, got to be some de minimis acreage. It just doesn't merit this additional zoning restriction.
Brandon or Bill, I see a hand up on your window.
First, we've already taken out any lot that's less than half an acre. The smallest of those islands that you see left on the map is three quarters of an acre. And then also, I just wanted to point out that the version you have in front of you needs to be corrected to say that if there is an exception given to the limitation on retaining walls, that that would be considered by staff and not by Planning Commission. That's as per Planning Commission recommendation. We talked about that in the subcommittee meeting this morning, but I'm not sure we made that clear to the entire council in the study session.
Thank you for that clarification.
Can I ask you a question of Bill? Bill, if we made the de minimis acreage one acre, how many of these islands would that take in?
I think it'd only take one, I think.
One, possibly two. Can you see the map that's?
No.
I can share a screen.
We have the map up of the actual zone, and it shows those islands. Brandon believes one, possibly two, but not more than, than the two that you'll see if we can show the map. And they are up in the northeast quadrant.
The maps that I have are all going to have to be zoomed in on a fair bit. If there are better ones, I'm absolutely happy to pull those up. I just don't have them.
I think that if you have the, I think I gave you a map, you could pull that one up, and that'd be just fine. I think it will show, yep. This, can you go to, can you go to the next slide? And then the next one. I think that'll, yes. This is three quarters of an acre.
One on the east.
East, yes. If you can see my, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but there's a water tank right there. That's three. Can't see it. You can't see my cursor? I can.
So it's the small island on the southeast corner of the map.
Oh, okay.
That one's three quarters of an acre.
And then the one to the west, west central, most small parcel there, that's probably about an acre.
Is that on Canyon Road or is it?
Yeah, I believe that's on, is that on Foothill, I think?
It's on Foothill.
Okay.
Small island to the west. Looks like it's on Foothill.
And then the one over on Canyon, is that Canyon Road to the, to the west?
I think that's Foothill.
Yeah, line up with the cemetery.
Mr. Harding has a hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I just, you know, perhaps wanted to point out that, that what is before us kind of already meets what Mr. Fillmore was recommending, which was to eliminate anything less than a half acre, and we have nothing less than three quarters of an acre. So perhaps, you know, what is, is before us, that the proposal can already meets that concern.
That's, and that's a fair point. I had forgotten that we had that half acre. Dave Sewell, is there, is there any de minimis acreage you could get comfortable with if it was excluded? Or is it just kind of an all or nothing thing for you?
I thought he made it clear earlier that it was all or nothing. Am I understanding you, Mr. Sewell?
Yeah, I've just, I've just had too many property owners look over at the hillside and say, "Look, I'm not, I'm not up there. There's people who've developed all around me, and why should I be up to a different standard?" So that's, for me, it's not the size. It's, it's the dividing line between where we've already decided that we're going to develop and this, you know, going farther out in the foothills. and this, you know, going farther out in the foothills.
I think it's worth noting, um, that this is more or less an ordinance that functions like a design standard that is typical of other zones in the city where there's expectations about designs. I I I just, I'm I'm a little worried that we're over overstating. Um, on the one hand, we're understa- well, we're, I I'm just a little worried that we're overstating the impact that this has or the unusual nature of this impact. I don't think it's unusual, nor do I think it's, uh, excessive. So, well, uh, so we've got a a substitute motion that was in.
No, I'm I'm gonna withdraw that.
Okay, all right.
And I think it's, I think it's worth noting, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, people do have the right to seek a variance.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Sewell.
Uh, one other matter, uh, staff recommended a change on one of the properties. Do we need, if we want to adopt that, do we need a motion? Um, they recommended removing the, I believe it was the Paul Perry property.
Mr. John.
Before anybody else answers that, can I just, um, jump in and say, we're still on item number twelve, right?
Correct.
So we're right at the moment, we're actually considering a vote on the text of the zone, not on the map.
Okay, thank you. So let let me, how about this, uh, Mr. Sewell? Let's let's vote on the text. And then, uh, when we turn to the map, we can address that question. Is that, does that seem fair and related that we've been debating? All right, so I'm gonna call for a vote on the implied motion. Um, I'll go ahead and start, uh, and and my, I am George Finley, I'll vote yes. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben? Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Unanimous, we'll turn then to item number thirteen. And, um, we will, we've already had discussion of of this item and presentation on it. So, uh, the question that Mr. Sewell has raised is, do we need a substitute motion uh, that would, um, specifically mention the exclusion of the the, what was it? Two point eight acre Pete parcel of Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Do we need a substitute motion on that or what what's the guidance here?
Yes, I would say if there, um, if there's any amendment being made to the map that is, was already in the materials as they exhibit to the ordinance, then there should be a a motion to, uh, to amend that map, um, before voting on the implied motion.
Right. Well, I, uh, go ahead, Mr. Shipley.
I just, could I get clarification from staff on why the property would have been excluded anyway? I I didn't really, I didn't understand that.
It would have been excluded anyway because there's a house on it. And we we believe the text of the ordinance itself would exclude it. But I'm I'm quite sure that Mr. Perry would appreciate the kind of belt and suspenders approach to also take it out of the zone.
Thank you.
I would, I would move, uh, that we remove that, uh, parcel. I don't know how much more specific I need to be in the motion.
The parcel number is two zero zero three two zero zero five seven.
That's too many numbers for me to repeat.
The two, the two point eight acre parcel belonging to Paul Perry.
Okay, two point eight acre parcel belonging to Paul, uh, Paul Perry. I propose that we, that it be removed from the map. Is there, uh, is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Mr. Sewell seconds, is there discussion? So, uh, I'll call for a vote, oh, Ms. Ellsworth, go ahead.
Yeah, how would a different property owner remove their property from the map? And how, what criteria would we approve that with?
Well, again, this was because he has a, he has a house on the property.
And no one else does? At any other?
Right, that's why all that area was taken out, that was taken out. Those are either houses or existing plating lots in an existing subdivision, already platted lots.
Okay, thanks.
We have a discussion of the motion. I'll call for a vote on the motion, uh, Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Philmore?
Yes.
Your Hoben?
Yes.
Sewell?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's, uh, unanimous. Okay, so now we are, I would call for a vote on the implied motion, which now has the substitute, uh, uh, amendment of the, um, Perry parcel being exempted. And I will call for a vote on this and I'll begin with Ms. Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes, once again.
Mr. Sewell?
Oh, I'm sorry, I had my hand up to just raise a legal question, can I do that?
That's true, I apologize, I didn't see it.
Um, so what what is the status, uh, after this vote, assuming we approve this? Does it, uh, before we vote on the next motion, I mean, does it go into effect with the original map? Or is it not in effect until we approve the map?
So, I, you may have lost me there. I, my understanding would be, uh, that the substitute motion just removed a, just directed a parcel to be removed from the map. And if the current vote is on the implied motion, which is to approve the application of the zone with the amended map, so I think that the current vote is to approve the map.
So, um, okay, I thought we were voting on the text.
Now, that, that, that vote already took place. We're.
Right, okay.
We've moved on to number thirteen now and, and, uh, so this is, this is the vote on the ordinance approving the map.
Okay, thank you.
And so, and so far, the only, uh, emendation that's been made has been that the parcel that, uh, Councilor Hannity moved to remove.
Okay, and, uh, I was just curious, I mean, it looks like this is going to pass, but what what would be the status if this map did didn't pass, given that we've already passed the text amendment?
Um, then basically, the the text that explains what the zone does would be part of our code, but it wouldn't, uh, as of this moment, apply to any property within the city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, uh, my vote is is no.
Okay, I apologize, Mr. Sewell, that I didn't see your hand up before it started.
Oh, no problem.
All right, Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And I think I hadn't voted yet, and I will vote yes. So was that everybody? So that was?
I don't think I voted.
Oh, I'm sorry, I started, yeah, okay, Mr. Harding, I forget where I start sometimes.
Not a problem, uh, and I vote yes.
All right, so the vote is six to one in favor with Mr. Sewell, uh, uh, voting against. So, um, we are at nine twenty-five and I want to ask for, um, your, uh, feelings as a council. In some ways, uh, timing is better than I, uh, thought in some ways. Um, the question is whether or not, um, we have the energy and will to move forward and finish, uh, this last item, or whether we feel like it would be best, uh, to continue this item to, uh, the, our next meeting. With, uh, potential apologies to all those who were hoping and expecting us to resolve this this evening. This is a little bit, uh, uh, new terrain for, uh, us, because I had, we had sort of discussed this as a loose policy that, you know, when we got to nine, we were gonna have that kind of a conversation. And I just, uh, I don't want to press on if it feels like it's, it's not gonna, we're not thinking clearly enough, we're, we're ready to let it go and and come back to it when we're fresher.
But I guess.
Yeah, let's finish up.
All right, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right, well, all right, so we're gonna turn to our last item. Um, I would like us to, um, hopefully, you know, not go ex- too long with this item if possible. Um, but we are, um, on item number fourteen. Uh, an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately eighteen point five acres of real property generally located at nine oh one west, fifteen sixty south from residential agricultural and agricultural to one family residential in the Lakewood neighborhood. And this is presented by Brian Maxfield, our planning supervisor.
Thank you. Uh, I guess we'll just ask for questions, however, we do want to have one clarification. Uh, Public Works, uh, did want it to be made known that, uh, a lot of the utility improvements, even though we have a concept plan, uh, we're not trying to approve those utility improvements. There are some agreements that need to be made, uh, for those to work out with adjacent landowners and some other things. So your approval of the rezoning, uh, as planning staff, we don't believe that would affect, obviously, what they'd have to do for a preliminary approval anyway and meet the city ordinances and standards. Uh, but I think engineering wanted to be comfortable that it was understood, uh, by the applicant and by city council, municipal council, that, uh, there still are some, some hoops to jump through before, uh, the project is actually vested through a preliminary approval process. And otherwise, I'll just ask if there are any questions.
Did the chair leave?
So, I, yeah, it looks like he did. I'll I'll take some prerogative here as as vice chair, uh, with him stepping away. I think he expected a long presentation. Um, I think I saw Ms. Ellsworth's hand first, so Councilor Ellsworth, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Why, I can't remember why we continued this last time. What did we, what were we trying to determine?
Uh, you'd look for allowing, uh, additional input through the, uh, I don't want to call it City View, what's our other program?
Open City Hall?
Open City Hall. And, uh, I think that was principally it, just to have that consideration. I may be mistaken, I'll just ha- ask the council members who continued that.
That's correct.
Additionally, I think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, there's also been a a development agreement proffered in this matter, is that right?
That's correct, and, uh, basically, the proffer is to hold the density at no more than four units per acre net density.
And to, and to build according to the site plan, correct?
Correct, uh, yeah, I think we we did some things again because some of the utilities aren't finalized. It may cause little movements here or there. We tried not to make it so strict that everything had to be exactly in the same place, but the general gist of the concept plan would be followed.
So I would just point out to the council members, similar to the Christianson Oil item, that the ordinance to which the implied motion currently applies does not mention the development agreement. So if the proffered development agreement is something that the council wants to accept and wants to be executed, then there should be a motion to substitute the, the development agreement version of the ordinance.
Sorry, I had to step away for a moment. Um, it looks like Mr. Harding has his hand up next.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I do have a question about how that development agreement, I guess I should first state. We have a, 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 a policy that the, um, a non-binding policy that the the council adopted that this area should be developed at four units to the acre. The the requested zone, which is R one seven, is more dense than that. Um, but it, based on the 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 site plan, it looks like it's because they wanted to have a variety of, um, property sizes, which which I support. And I think, um, aligns with the, um, additional policies that were approved by the the council. Uh, but we really don't have a a zone to accommodate that. So, uh, I I appreciate the the, uh, the proffered development agreement. And I think, um, that with that, uh, gives me, um, generally confidence that, that, um, we can approve this, uh, development and and it can move forward and and be aligned with with the policies that have already been adopted. My one question, uh, is regarding the the one acre parcel, uh, that would remain, um, that has a, an existing home on it already. It 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 feels like if everything else is is developed according to that site plan, um, you know, that that kind of locks in in the density, except for that one, one acre, uh, plot that may be primed for redevelopment in short order. If if that were to, um, for example, be subdivided into R one se- seven sized lots, uh, that would push the density of the overall development of four acres. Also, the way that the roads are built, um, you know, other than some like flag lot type efforts, there's really not much access to that, that site. So I guess my question is, is, um, has has the city considered, or have there been discussions already on on what happens if, um, the owner of that one acre plot later on asks for it to be subdivided, um, you know, into R one side, seven size lots? Um, has there been any discussion about that? Um, do we have a plan for how we might accommodate that? If we plan to accommodate it, do we have a plan to, um, you know, do, have we looked at that and said, oh, well, that won't be possible because of this reason or that reason? And I guess finally, does the development agreement, we feel like the development agreement is a, would either facilitate that or prevent it? And how, how good do we feel about that tool?
Uh, if I could go ahead and answer that and and maybe reverse it. The applicant is actually, uh, the owner of the property currently is the owner of that one acre property. And he will also, while that property also be subject to the development agreement, so they would still be bound by that same density. So they would not be able to to really realize more of a density than the rest of the project. Uh, that said, we did look at at numerous options, ways to make the project work that confront a road along his property. One of the factors that really kept coming into play was the alignment of roads to the north, where they need to align with the existing streets coming down from the north. They have to be within a certain distance, and David Day knows exactly what that is, but a certain distance, uh, or else separated by a certain distance if they can't be close enough. And so to make those alignments work that really gives us a lot better flow to that area, it was, uh, felt that the best way would just be to let those develop as a, as a flag lot or some other form through that area. It it's a trade off and ideally, again, it gets into that issue that if the whole acreage were one big piece and no homes were on it and everything else, and it was just a clean slate that way, it's much easier to design. But we do have to work around existing features and that's, I, we believe as staff that that was the best solution.
Okay, thank you. That that was very helpful, um, your answer really helped in answer those questions. Um, but to to be clear, my understanding is that right now it's at four units to the acre, even though the R one seven is denser than four units to the acre. But overall, it is four units to the acre, but just barely. So if that property were to be subdivided in the future, then the overall density would be greater than four units to the acre. And so I I think if anything, I I, you know, if I understand that development agreement, I I believe it would suggest that that one, uh, acre lot shouldn't be subdivided. But I just don't know, like, in in ten years, if, if, you know, would we, you know, what what's the likelihood that that development agreement prevents that? That subdivision of of that one acre lot? Or or am I mistaken? Do staff believe that, uh, we could subdivide that and and not violate the the four units to the acre?
Yeah, because they are subject to the development agreement also, that same property is. So they would not be able to have more than four units per acre net density on that, on that piece, on that one acre piece, as well as the rest of the subdivision. So together, they would never, never exceed that, four a units per. together, they would never, never exceed that, four eight units per acre net density. They're under the same restriction.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Certainly, it's not included in the, okay, maybe that's the confusion. It's not included in the averages for the subdivision. It's taken out when we look at the net density for the subdivision.
I guess that's my question.
Yeah, that acre was not included in that overall net density.
Okay, okay. So, so, so it's not part of the overall density calculation, and so if it densifies, if it subdivides in the future, as long as it doesn't go over four units to the acre, then the overall, overall would not violate that four.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for resolving that.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Um, yeah, I just think that this is a pretty straightforward project. It's single-family residential that usually doesn't ruffle feathers. It shouldn't ruffle feathers. It's on a quarter an acre. Um, I don't think it even warrants a development agreement. It's just so straightforward, and I feel bad that we give a really straightforward, really desirable project, by all accounts, uh, the runaround, that we would, you know, require them to jump through multiple hoops. So I think we should pass this really quickly. Um, and I don't think that a development agreement's even necessary.
Mr. Jones? Did you have a comment, or is that from before?
That was from before, I apologize.
Okay, Mr. Fillmore?
I was just curious about the development agreement. Uh, what's the status on that? Has it been reviewed and approved?
Yes, I, I've looked at it. Uh, it's, it's pretty straightforward and simple, and so I've looked at it. I believe it was in your materials, although I'm not certain about that. Uh, and there is a, a draft ordinance already ready, uh, to be substituted that would authorize ex, uh, approval and execution of the development agreement if the council so desires.
Okay. Well, I would, uh, I would make a motion to approve that, uh, as you explained it, and invite Shannon to second it.
Does that include the development agreement?
It does. I don't, I don't think this development agreement, which is fairly simple and straightforward, is, has an adverse effect.
Well, what's the point of having a development agreement if we don't need it?
I'd say it doesn't have an adverse effect. It just clarifies the, the four units per acre.
Yeah, it doesn't the zone say that?
No, that's why they're doing the development agreement.
The R one seven zone would allow for more lots than what they're showing. What they're showing is the four units to the acre. With strictly R one seven zoning, you could get more than that. Probably ten more lots.
Well, if we keep doing development agreements, that just tells us that we don't like our zones.
Not necessarily. The, the development agreements, aren't they intended to refine things or to address unique elements? That the zones are too general, too broad to contemplate?
Can I point out that we haven't had public comment yet, and we may be, um, getting into the weeds here of our discussion? Um, so maybe we could, uh, I, I see two more hands up from council members. I don't know if those can wait. Um, if there's anything pressing that you need to clarify. Okay, let me, let me just turn quickly to, uh, um, give the public an opportunity to, to chime in. I see four callers are online. So if anyone would like to make a comment, they can press star nine. And I see, uh, Becky Bogdan, Neighborhood Chair. Go ahead, Becky.
Oh, hi. I just want to tell you all thanks for your time and for allowing us to have more information. And I appreciate the development agreement, and I hope that that would go forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Give it just a second here. All right, if a hand goes up, I'll, I'll revert back to the public, but I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Sorry, and I apologize. A little worked about getting, Mr. Hoben, go ahead.
Uh, I'll just, I want to second, um, Mr. Fillmore's motion, and remind everyone that the spirit goes to bed at midnight, and common sense on the council goes to bed at nine. So, I don't know, can, can I do a move that we vote? I'm just kidding, but I, I'd like to second his motion, and let's keep it moving.
All right, uh, is there any discussion of that motion, Mr. Harding?
Yeah, just, just a quick clarification. I, I, I like, you know, I think that the site plan, um, is, is good and aligns with everything. Um, but the, the R one seven is necessary because some of the lots are smaller, and, but the R one seven, the density is actually over six, and so it, it, you know, and, and what we're approving now isn't the site plan. What we're approving now is the, the zone, so there's nothing to, you know, that would stop them from redoing their site plan and, and dropping it, you know, or increasing the density to six. So, um, I actually a, a, agree with Ms. Ellsworth that, um, that I think the reason that the, uh, development agreement is preferable is, is, uh, because our, our zone is not flexible enough in what we would like it to do. And I would like to see some zones that allow for flexibility in, in, uh, lot sizes, and so we can have a variety of, of, uh, of lot sizes. Um, so that's, that's why I think, uh, the development agreement is, is desirable.
So can I have a restatement of the motion? What exactly, Mr. Fillmore, you made the motion?
Well, I'll give it a shot. I guess, uh, with respect to, you know, item fourteen on the agenda, I'm just moving that we approve the proposed ordinance amending the zone map clarification as set forth therein, coupled with the development agreement that, uh, limits it to four units per acre.
Okay, and that was seconded. We've had some discussion. Any further discussion?
I would just comment, um, to make clear to everyone that, that, you know, according to our protocols for how we handle our implied motions, what that serves as, as, is a, is a motion to substitute the, the variant ordinance. Once that motion is approved, you'll still need to vote on the implied motion, uh, with the, with the amended ordinance.
Got it. All right, uh, I'll call for a vote on the substitute motion. I will vote first. Uh, I vote yes. Uh, Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes, siree.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes, and I want to second Mr. Hoben's comment about meeting times, too.
Mr. S-, uh, Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
All right, the vote on that substitute motion is unanimous. So now we will come back and, um, consider, uh, the motion as now substituted. I will call for a vote on the mushin- motion as now s-
Going downhill.
Trying to slur my speech, my-
Mushin'.
Uh, okay. Uh, I will call for a vote on the substituted motion. Uh, Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fillmore?
Yes.
Mr. Hoben?
Yes.
Mr. Sewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
And I, George Hanley, will vote yes, so the voting is unanimous. I want to say to the new counselors, you know, I, I feel like that, uh, Monty Python skit when they're talking about how hard they had it when they were in school, and everyone keeps telling the harder story. Um, you have no idea. You went from one to nine forty-five, and you think that was a marathon? Well, we've done twelve to eleven forty, if that makes you feel any better.
Boy, it does. It does.
I, I want to point out that, uh, Bill Pepperoni pointed out to me that we actually neglected to make an amendment to the text about the issue of allowing staff to negotiate the retaining wall issue. Um, but Brian Jones advises that we should just come back and do that at a later point, so we can, uh, we can do that little, uh, uh, cleanup act at a, at a later point.
I, I guess I can ask, Bill. I, I sent him a message and didn't, I don't know if he was able to see it, but I don't know how hard he feels like that would be to do. I know that's going to require an amendment that's going to have to go back in front of the Planning Commission. But at this point, I was explaining to George that in order to fix that, we would need a motion to reconsider, which would then need to pass, which would undo the approval of the text amen, that, the text ordinance, then we would need a motion to amend the text ordinance, then we would have, need to vote on the text, uh, ordinance again. And then there's some, at least legal argument, that I would probably feel better if we then reconsidered the map, too, because theoretically, we've undone the text ordinance, and it no longer, as if it had never been passed, and it no longer exists when the map ordinance was passed. So from my perspective, it's cleaner if we just do it later, but I don't know how much of a problem that is.
That would be just fine. I, I just, I'm not sure why we need to go back to Planning Commission, since the Planning Commission is the one who made that recommendation, that that was their recommendation to the council.
That's a good point. So we could just bring forward a, an ordinance that supports the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Right.
Good. Can we clean that up in two weeks? Be done with it?
I think that should be fine, Bill.
I would think so, yes.
Yeah. Okay. I think that's cleaner than trying to do it the other way.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure at this ti- time of night that anybody will follow my explanation of what we need to do, including me.
And I, I, um, Hannah has reminded me of something else I neglected, and I'm very apologetic about this, and I don't know if it's appropriate, because it could take thirty seconds, but I had intended to include a dis-, uh, a discussion when we were in the work meeting, uh, the Critical Hillside overlay zone, and I forgot to do this. And the que- the question that I wanted to pose to the council was this. Uh, we discussed this at the Foothills Committee, um, no, well, we've, we've discussed this on and off in the Foothills Committee. I met with Gary McGinn and Robert Mills, and I asked them how would we go about the next stage of having a broader discussion about the possibility of creating an area plan for the northeast, resolving issues regarding trails and roads, and, uh, figuring out what our plans are related to possible annexations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which is a lo- a much larger conversation. And what Gary and Robert asked was, all they needed was, um, uh, request, uh, from the council to, um, ask them to begin that process of designing, um, the, the discussion. Uh, I don't know if I phrased that right. I don't know if it's wildly inappropriate that I say it now. Um, so if I'm out of line, Brian Jones, just let me know, but I, I, I was just looking, we were, I, I just meant to do this during the Critical Hillside, and all I was looking for was a vote from the council, permission from the council to, uh, make that request of staff. Is there, are there any questions about, is there any problem with what I'm saying, Brian?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, you're not, you're not proposing taking any, uh, final action, and it is related to the item that you just voted on. Um, again, perhaps the easiest way to do that, since it's something that you want to have happen anyway, would be to do it by unanimous consent, and simply say that it's your intention, if there's no objection, by unanimous consent, to ask staff to do that.
So that is my intention, to ask staff to begin that process of, uh, um, developing a plan for, uh, discussion and implement, uh, discussion about a, an area plan for the northeast.
Uh, George?
Yes.
I have some objections to that. Can we discuss it and then put it on a future agenda?
Sure. All right. Um, then if that's the situation as we have it, then we will, if there's no objection, I don't know that there's going to be. I think Travis might make a strong one, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one thing?
Please.
Oh, okay. Uh, just to let you know, tonight was my swan song. After forty-two years, I'm going to be retiring a week from Thursday. So I just want to thank you all for your indulgence, and thank you for going ahead with this item tonight. Uh, but it's just how much I appreciated working for Provo City and, and my time spent here and working with all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, you are-
Congratulations.
Yeah, you are a major asset, and I, I, I'm really worried about losing you. Um, I wouldn't, uh, want to demand that you continue working beyond what is reasonable, but you've been a fabulous asset to the city. Every project you've been on, I, I, I always hear great comments from other staff and from the public about the work you do and have done for so many years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll miss you. We will miss you.
I hope you enjoy Cedar City full-time.
Thank you. There's no festival this year.
Council, I don't know if you know this, but for a number of years, he's been commuting up during the week for his work and going home on the weekends. So he's made quite a sacrifice for Provo. In the four years I've been here, he's been a great resource to me and a friend, and I very much appreciate him and congratulate him on his retirement. And Brian, I'm, I, I know where you live, as you showed me on the map, so I'm going to hunt you down if we need help.
Sounds good.
All right, well, good night all. Thank you so much for your patience and endurance.
Thank you.
Good night all.